The...
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Norton.
Yeah.
Councilmember Story.
Here.
Councilmember Batorf.
Here.
Councilmember Termini.
Here.
And Mayor Harland.
Here. Will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a revised agenda also, and it says revised at the top, so if anyone needs a copy of it, they're in the back of the room. And Sue, what is the change that we have for that?
Well, I just want to make mention that Item 7 regarding Board Commissions and Committee Appointments, in the original agenda, it mentions that this, the appointments are going to be discussed under 9A, under General Government, actually be 9B.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item is a presentation to Ed Newman. Evening, Ed. Come on up. I'm going to actually let you talk more than I am because I would have had to do an awful lot of research to list all the years that you've been on. Go ahead, let him face this way, that's where the camera is. Because you've been on for so long, you've worked on so many projects, you've seen Capitola go through so many changes, so many different things, and you've been such a tremendous asset that we really, really thank you very much. I have this certificate of appreciation for you, and I also have a present, but I forgot the present, I'm sorry. I'll bring that by tomorrow. But I'd like you to talk a little bit about your time on the Planning Commission and some of the things that you remember. You've worked with lots of different Planning Commissioners, several different staff members, and it's, I hope it's been as rewarding to you as it's been to the city, because you've just been invaluable to the city, and we really, really appreciate it.
Well, thank you. I really, I really do appreciate this certificate of appreciation. It's been, it's been a great pleasure for me to work on the, serve on the Planning Commission with three of the sitting council people here, with many other Commissioners, with the acting Community Development Director, and all of her predecessors, with the other staff members. It's been a real education for me. I mean, it would be trite for me to say that Capitola, from a planning standpoint, is a special place with a charm unto itself, but that's the truth. And that's what the Planning Commissioners try to preserve with the guidance of the City So I just, it's also true that we couldn't do it without the assistance of the staff, and I want to make sure that we recognize all of their efforts. So I want to thank you again, and I look forward to following the developments of both the City Council and the Planning Commission.
Can you tell us how many years you've been on?
Eight years. And I'm still, still serving on the General Plan Advisory Committee, so I'll still be in touch with what's going on.
And also, Ed and I first started in the city in 1984, on the Rent Review Board that we had. I think you were maybe on before I was appointed, but that was a board of citizens that reviewed the rent increase applications for the mobile home parks. And we tried to make fair judgments about what their increases should be, and the owners, of course, were never happy, so they all got appealed to the City Council, so that board went out of existence, but you remember that?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do.
That was, that was very interesting. So that's where I first met Ed, and I'm so glad he's been still involved with city things, because he has so much to offer, and it's just been, it's been tremendous. We're gonna, we're gonna miss you.
My only last word is that you look around, and there are people here who have put in so many more years than I have, so it's really surprising that I get this award, but I'll be the surrogate for the people who have really put in the hard work here.
Good. And thank you for being on the General Plan Advisory Committee. That will continue, and for several more years, and we really appreciate that you're on that. You provide valuable advice and information. So thank you all very, thank you very much. Thank you. Next item is a report on closed session from Mr. Barisoni, please.
Thank you, Mayor Harland. The items that the City Council discussed in closed session this evening are listed on the first two pages of the Council's posted agenda. The Council discussed all of the pending litigation concerning claims involving the County of Santa Cruz Lexington Insurance Company and numerous property owners arising out of the March 2011 Pacific Cove underground pipe failure and the water damage that ensued as a result of that to various properties throughout the city. The Council heard from the City Attorney and City Manager with regard to the status of those numerous lawsuits, and they're all listed on the posted agenda, and the Council gave us ongoing instructions with regard to the defense and prosecution of those lawsuits. Took no other reportable action in closed session. The Council heard from the City Manager and the City Attorney with a lawsuit that has been threatened by the Save the Plastic Bag Coalition concerning the city's potential plastic bag ban ordinance, and we provided the Council with a status report on that matter, but took no reportable action in closed session. The Council also heard from the City Manager and the City Attorney with regard to potential litigation against the County of Santa Cruz pertaining to the county's improper withholding of property taxes from the City of Capitola that were paid by City of Capitola taxpayers. The Council, at this juncture, did not instruct the City Attorney to file a lawsuit, but instead wants to withhold giving direction in that regard until it ascertains whether the county's position is actually, the county's stated position to date is actually the position of the Board of Supervisors of Santa Cruz County. The Council also heard from the City Manager and the City Public Works Director, who is the city's property negotiator, with respect to the sale of a portion of a parcel on McGregor Drive, APN 036341.02. That, that property, the negotiations are for the sale of that property to the Soquel Creek Water District for a pump station, and the Council authorized an extension of the agreement that grants Soquel Creek an option to purchase that small portion of property. The option will now extend through March of this year. A copy of that agreement is available for review upon request. It hasn't been signed yet, but it will be available once it is signed. And finally, the Council, prior to going into closed session, made the necessary findings to add a matter concerning a personnel, potential layoff to the closed session agenda, and that matter was discussed with the City Manager in closed session. The Council took no reportable action in closed session on that. And that's the end of my oral report.
Thank you very much. Number four, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? I don't think so. Then, item number five is public comments. This is a time for members of the public to come up and talk about any item not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, please wait till we get to it, but otherwise, you're welcome to come up and give us your thoughts. Good evening.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Darrell Johnson, and...
I'm James Lukarath.
And we're here representing the Seniors Council Board of Directors and the Area Agents, Agency on Aging Advisory Council. During last year's budget cycle, the City Council recognized the important work being performed by local community-based organizations and the cost effectiveness of those programs by voting to maintain funding levels at the amounts similar to the previous year. Councilmember Harland, Termini, and Norton all voted in favor of that funding level. Councilmember Story, who recused himself from the vote because of his position in community bridges, identified additional funds that the Council could consider allocating in areas of their priority. We are here today to deliver thank you notes to each of you for your votes and the work you've done for seniors in Capitola.
On behalf of the Senior Council's Board of Directors and the Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council, we present these thank you cards to Councilmembers Stephanie Harland, Dennis Norton, Mike Termini, and Sam Story for their continued support of the Seniors Council, of seniors in general, and of community programs' funding. Thank you so very much. We look forward to adding newly-elected Councilmember Ed Bortoff to our thank you list in the years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all of your good work. Could we have the timer on, Sue, please, also? Good evening.
Good evening. I know that later this evening, there's an item on the agenda that's involving the Women's Self-Defense Initiative, but I would like this opportunity to thank you for getting this started for the community. As an update, the first Women's Self-Defense class was offered in December, and we had nine participants. Last September, we also offered an Engaging the Bystander Workshop. And these participants are learning awareness, empowerment, but most importantly, they're learning about trusting their instincts, to speak up for themselves, and to say no. For these and future women who take the courses here in Capitola, we thank you. Also, coming up in February, we are offering our second course, which is called Girls and Their Women Allies. That's a class for women, girls eight to 12 years old, who take the class with a mother, female family friend, grandmother, or aunt. Thank you again.
Thank you very much for your work on this. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Tiffany Wise-West, and I'm here, I'm a citizen of Capitola. I'm also a Commissioner on the Commission on the Environment, and I'm here today to share with you my personal thoughts on the value of the Commission on the Environment, particularly in light of the fact that there is consideration of a possible change in format of the Commission currently. First, I'd like to remind you of the Commission's commitment to advise and assist in all aspects of environmental protection in Capitola, and of the importance of the accomplishments that we have achieved over the years in the existence of the Commission. While you can reference my letter, which is an attachment to the agenda for more details, I just want to highlight a couple of those accomplishments this evening. Having been the first Commission on the Environment in the county, and the model upon which other Commission on the Environment has been based upon, notably the County Commission on the Environment, the COE has completed projects such as the development of the construction site stormwater best management plan sheet for contractors. They've assisted staff and council with ordinance development, as well as producing a green economy matrix, and have developed content for Commission on the Environment webpage with green resources, both citywide and regionally. Recently, we've had some success, a good deal of success, conducting the first of a three-part panel series on sustainability with the community. We had 64 attendees at that in the fall. And we're developing an eco tour, which is scheduled to be launched this summer, which features environmental stewardship in Capitola. I also want to remind you that the trend in municipal governance is actually going towards the formation of and utilization of Commissions on the Environment, rather than getting away from the institutionalized, or getting towards less institutionalized citizens groups and advisory boards. Importantly, we are committed to providing expertise and guidance on the general plan update, and specifically are prepared for a large role in the climate action planning and plan preparation. We're very, also very excited to invigorate the Commission with the new energy from two recent applicants for the youth commission, for the Commission on the Environment Youth Members. I thank you for your time and consideration as you consider the, the future of the Commission, and I hope you consider my comments. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, my name's Karen Lacy, and I, I came to talk tonight because there's some issues that are really important to me. I'm a member of community television, and I make independent programs of issues that are health-centered and environmental-centered. Anyway, recently, I made a little video for the Snapshot Day for the Coastal Watershed Commission, or the Coastal Watershed Council, rather, and in December, I got an, an email from them letting us, all of the people who are on the mailing list, know that their water quality, our water quality, is impaired. And I had never heard that word before, and it was really kind of shocking to me, because when I videoed the event, all the teams came back and they said how great our water looked, and there was fish in the streams, and all that kind of stuff. It looked really, really great. And then, in December, I went, oh my gosh, it's impaired. And that means that it's not clean enough to be used for swimming, recreation, drinking water, agriculture, fish and wildlife habitat. That means that our pollinators are at risk of toxic, I don't know, whatever it's called, but we can't have our bees and bats get poisoned by our water, otherwise, we won't have food. It's pretty serious, and I was hoping that maybe you could put it on your agenda for next time, so that the, so Greg could come and talk to you about some of the issues that may be possible solutions, including outreach to the community, maybe making a video with community television, not me, producing a show, but community television and the Coastal Watershed Council together, to raise awareness of this issue in our community. I think that would be a great way to spend a little bit of money, and it would be really well-spent. The second issue is what they're spraying in the air. I have no idea what it is, but it's taking our sunny days, and it's making this particulate matter. I had a kidney transplant 10 years ago, and I protect my health by making sure that I breathe clean air as much as possible, I eat good food, and I garden. So I'm doing everything I can, and I found that my blood aluminum level was 22, which is way, way above normal. It was actually two and a half times higher than what it should be. So I asked my doctor at Stanford, what can I do? I'm not having any aluminum in my body, in my environment, I'm not drinking aluminum out of, I mean, soda pop out of aluminum cans. What's causing this? And he said, well, do your research. You do research? So I did. And I found that supposedly, they're spraying aluminum strontium and barium out of these planes. So I started wearing a particulate mask. I thought, I don't know what I can do, I'm not a scientist. And so I wore a little particulate mask every time I went outside for 11 months, the kind of particulate mask that people that build surfboards wear to protect their lungs.
Your three minutes is up, but I would, so I need to go on to the next speaker.
And...
If you could leave your name and telephone number, I'll be happy to call you and follow up with you.
And last week, I got a new particulate, a new aluminum level, which is now not detectable. So whatever I was doing, which was wearing a particulate mask when I was outside, has worked.
Your three minutes is up, so we need to go on to the next speaker. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please leave your name and telephone number with the city clerk, and I will call you about the water quality issue. I'll be happy to follow up on that.
Yes, I'm sure Greg would love to come and talk to you about it.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Gudera, and I'm owner of Kaleidoscope, the parent-teacher store in Capitola, and please excuse my voice, it seems to have left me this evening. I'm here because I just wanted to ask you to help me with a situation, and that's that I'm totally nervous, that's part of what I'm really going to say. But anyway, I wanted to tell you about this bag situation, the plastic bags in Capitola. I ordered a whole year's supply of plastic bags, and realized that we are now coming upon this thing that we're not supposed to have plastic bags. And so I luckily, just yesterday, was able to cancel my order, and instead to buy paper bags. But what I wanted to ask you was, will you allow me to use the, what I have, or kind of grandfather, what I have in the store that I have right now? Because I, I just don't want, if I throw them away, I feel that that's worse than using them, actually. But anyway, I wanted to know if you would give me that without having a penalty. So I did cancel 10,000 of these plastic bags, and I want you to know that I've lost $2,000 and had to pay a, a fee to cancel it, but I felt that I really belong to the community, and I feel really strongly about that. So that's what I wanted to just ask you about, if you would allow me to grandfather this. Now, these new bags are costing 40 cents versus what they were 10 cents, so it's four times the amount, and you know, that's kind of life, the way it is. But anyway, so what I wanted to ask you is one other thing that I'd like to just have you to look at, and that's to, I've heard a lot of rumors about, okay, now the paper bags are going to be 10 cents a piece, oh no, they're not, they're going to be 25 cents. And I've had a lot, I've talked to my community, all the mothers in the community and everything else, and they said, are you going to charge the 10, or are you going to charge the 25? What are you going to do? You know, because after all, you know, the, so what I'd like to just say this, is I hope that when you make this plastic provision, that you actually say, give it all of us the same fee, because it's going to talk, people are talking and saying, well, you know, I'm not going to that store again, or I'm boycotting that store. And I just want you to be clear, to know that as a small business, I really support my people, and I think that we just have to have some continuity about that. I know, three minutes are up, okay?
That's okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Number one, write, that ordinance calls for you to write a letter to the City Manager requesting the ability to have an exception, in other words, to use your plastic bags up this year. So just write a little note to the City Manager...
Okay.
Requesting that.
Okay.
And the second part is, the ordinance calls for 25 cents. The county's ordinance calls for 10 cents, but on Earth Day, they're going to, after a year, that'll have been a year for them, they're going to 25 cents.
So everybody will be on Earth Day, 25 cents?
I think so. I think Watsonville is the same. I think, I'm not sure about Watsonville, but Scotts Valley does not have an ordinance.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. If you have any questions, call the City Manager. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you to all the previous speakers. I always gain a lot of insight, and I really want to see the manufacturing of these bags and the plastics prohibited, so we don't have to deal with all, how they socialize the costs on us, as you just heard one example. As I was listening to the speakers tonight, I was thinking, this issue of the wireless microwave radiation toxicity affects everything. It affects the environment, the bees, the birds are dying in large part because of the frequencies, as well as the poisons in the ocean and genetically engineered crops. I was thinking of the people talking about seniors, I'm, I'm a senior, and how Dr. Magdal Havas from Canada Trent University writes and describes the symptoms from this radiation exposure as rapid aging syndrome. I was thinking of the person who is with the Commission on the Environment. When environmental issues are discussed, we really need to incorporate what are the sources of radiation, from cell towers, from Wi-Fi, from PG&E smart meters, and more. And just to remind people of the basics, cell phone, cell towers, Wi-Fi, and wireless smart meters emit microwave radio frequency radiation. Independent research shows this radiation causes cellular stress and damage, DNA damage, blood-brain barrier disruption, increased cancer and tumor risk, decreased melatonin, abnormal heart rhythms, altered brain waves, cognitive difficulties, and I'm a retired teacher. Memory and concentration, insomnia, headaches, links to Alzheimer's, and stroke, and impacts to wildlife, and children are especially vulnerable. How could anybody, anybody who loves children, who's a parent, a grandparent, a teacher, force microwave radiation from Wi-Fi systems in the schools, or give their children these devices? Especially when they've been informed and given data on the problems associated with this. To me, it sounds like irresponsibility, abuse, microwaving children, it's just, it's unconscionable. And I've addressed this before, just, parents, protect your children, make sure they're using wired devices, and get them out in nature, and remove wireless microwave, Wi-Fi, cell phones, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Hello. How are you all?
Fine, thank you.
Mayor Harland, councilmembers, Madam Treasurer, I want to congratulate those of you who are newly elected, and wish all the rest of you well as you continue in your positions. And I know you all know, it's no secret, that I don't necessarily think y'all do the best job of managing the people's money, and, but I do want to acknowledge the fact that what you do takes a lot of time and commitment. And so I am thankful that people are willing to put in the time and commitment to do it. So I appreciate that. I don't want you to think that that's totally lost on me. What I came to talk about tonight is, this is my building permit from the City of Capitola. I needed a wheelchair-accessible shower in my house. I had a shower over a tub arrangement. I took out the tub, put some tile on the floor, and put up a glass door, and the permit to do that was $488.22. And I would like for you all to take a look at what we charge for building permits. Now, I think that is a might outrageous. I would have been here earlier, but the, my contractor included this on the final bill, not the first one. And the other thing that came to my attention was that $90 of this, nearly 20 percent, is for the general plan, if that's, if I'm reading this right. And personally, I think this is unconscionable. If I was a developer, and I was about to make a bunch of money, then that's one thing. But I'm just a citizen who needed a wheelchair-accessible bathroom. You will not see my shower on a Kohler commercial. It does not have waves, it does not have music. It is just a plain utilitarian shower, okay? And so I call this to your attention, because I can't be the only one who thinks that some of this is outrageous, and I would ask you to take a look at it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak? Then we will take staff announcements right now. Are there any staff announcements, comments?
Ms. Mayor, I did have one item that I would, wanted to call everyone's attention to, is, as folks are probably aware, there was a community meeting with Target representatives earlier this week to talk a little bit about some of the impacts of the new Target building. And at that meeting, Target officials indicated that they were going to turn off their lights on the southwest corner of the building, which some of the neighbors in that community have been complaining about the light shining into their backyards in the evening. So I'd like to thank Target for taking that effort to sort of help resolve this issue, and hopefully close the door on it being, being a source of consternation in the community. So that was a real positive outcome. Supervisor Leopold hosted that meeting, I believe the mayor attended, as well as some of my staff, so thank you to Target, and thank you to Supervisor Leopold for helping to resolve the issue.
That's fantastic. Yeah, that's wonderful. Any other staff comments? Are there council comments? Dennis?
The situation in Newtown and Sandy Hook seems so distant to us now that it's starting to drop from the media. And then today, there's a gun killing at a school in California, and all of a sudden, it brings back... it brings back the light, the issue, how deep it is. And I've always felt that in many ways, government really starts from the bottom up. It reads a community to be concerned about an issue and do it. And I feel that us as a council itself has a responsibility for health and welfare of our community. We have the two biggest gun suppliers in Santa Cruz County within the jurisdiction of Capitola. I really don't know how many gun providers are out there. I don't know the rules and regulations that are set to us by the state and the federal government. But I do feel a responsibility, as a council member, member of this community, we're not so different than Sandy Hook. We're an urban, small community, a family community, not different from Sandy Hook. Could this happen here? Oh, God, hope not. That never comes to us. But, but if we do nothing, and we sit here and we watch this thing go forward in the state it's in, we'll never have change in this country. We'll never correct a problem that is there. We have 350 times the gun deaths in this country as Japan has, where they have gun controls. Something quite wrong there. So what I'm proposing is, is that I would like support of the council to have the city manager, our police chief, and our city attorney, look at the following questions, and you can add any to these that I have. I need, I need, as a responsible council member, to feel that we have done our best in controlling the issue, what we can do at our own level. And so I would like to know, who is licensed in Capitola to sell guns? I'd like to know what, what are the registration requirements that are required of any business that does sell guns? Can we, can we require regulations above federal and state law? With the thought, maybe we could require registration, licensing in Capitola? Can you buy AR-15s or semi-automatic, or automatic weapons here? I personally went to Outdoor World, and I talked to the girl across the counter, and she says, well, no, you can't buy an AR-15, but you can buy all the parts for it here. Not quite what I wanted to hear, but that's, that's a reality, okay? Can you buy clips for AR-15s or automatic weapons here in this town? I don't know that. I'd like to know that. Do we allow gun shows? Do we, do we allow private sales beyond the actual stores that we see there? Are there people licensed within the city to do that? They've had success, particularly in the last couple months, with doing gun turn-ins. Now, now, it seems like a minor gesture to do that, but the most dangerous guns are the ones that are sitting around in somebody's house that they really don't need or want, but they would, you know, find a way to dispense with it. I'd like to see something come back from our police chief, a possibility of doing this, as other communities have done this. And so if you'd like to add anything to it, but that's my request of this council, is to do our part in the health and well-being of this community, and look at this issue on our own.
Thank you. Mike, do you have any comments?
Oh, sure. And I think that, you know, getting a report back from staff on everything that Dennis asked for is, is good, and we should do this. I do know we still give free gun locks, and we have for 20 years in Capitola, one of the few cities that does that. Two things, the art project on 41st Avenue is, will begin construction in the next month or so, and the Art and Cultural Commission, in a few months, will up and actually see it being produced, and we hope to have it installed by August. And speaking of the Art Commission, it's an often forgotten piece, but there's a beautiful bronze piece in the back of the city council chambers, which was given to us by Barrington McLean, a local, a famous local sculptor, and it would bear, you know, looking at as we walk by. So that's about it. Thank you.
And do you have any?
I just have a couple reports on committees. I started on two new committees. One is the Labco Committee. And although we have an alternate position on that committee, going through the process right now with the city selection to get me placed on that committee as an alternate, because Capitola will have an actual role on the board in May of 2014, so we started that ball rolling. And just reporting that there's a new chair on that committee, it's Daniel Dodge from Watsonville. And the other one is the Ambag Committee, which also assigned on, and the new chair on that committee is Kent Almich from Monterey.
Well, thank you very much.
I'm sorry, Carmel.
Carmel. Carmel. Sam, do you have any?
Yeah. Thank you, Stephanie. I just wanted to maybe respond to some of Dennis's requests concerning the information, concerning guns, gun safety in Capitola. I really appreciate you bringing this in front of us, Dennis. I do think it is time that we actually have a conversation and discuss this issue. You're right, it seems that Sandy Hook is a far distance from us, but it would be a tremendous strategy if something like that were to happen here. So I certainly support looking at information. I do have a sense that many of these issues are beyond our jurisdiction and being able to control them. But I think that one thing we can control and should have, or would like to maybe add to this list, is having staff have conversations with the superintendent of schools about their preparedness and readiness, and their coordination with our police department to, one, help prevent an event like this. What are the things that we can maybe do to protect innocents that are in mass public places? New Brighton Middle School, the mall, and, and particularly with the school district about, you know, the tragedy that happened at Sandy Hook School. What are the things that they're doing to help prevent that? And maybe also considering whether there's maybe symbolic messages that we could send to higher elected officials to help control the proliferation of assault weapons, weapons in particular. So I just wanted to maybe add that to that list, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of announcements. The General Plan Advisory Council is meeting on Wednesday, the 16th, and I would encourage anyone who's interested in the future of Capitola to come and participate, listen, learn, help give direction for, for all of us. That's a very good committee, and they're doing a lot of important work. On the 24th, David Swanger, who is Santa Cruz County's poet laureate, is going to be speaking at La Silva Beach Library from 10 to 12:00 in the morning. And he came here to a council meeting a year or so ago, and, and we congratulated him for being selected Santa Cruz County poet laureate, and he read a charming poem that he wrote about Capitola. And it was just a wonderful moment. And then the other item is on March 13th. I said, that I mentioned that I had gone to Second Harvest Food Bank yesterday for a meeting to choose the annual Hunger Fighter Awardee. And as you know, there's a lot of people in this community that help to raise donated goods for Second Harvest Food Bank, that then distributes it all over the county to other food banks, and individuals, and organizations. And it's a huge operation, very successful, and they have an annual dinner every year where they present this award to a Hunger Fighter of the Year, or sometimes two people, because it's so hard to choose. I won't tell you who it is, because it's a surprise right now. But we received a lot of good nominations. It was very hard to decide who to choose, but we did make a decision, and those individuals will be honored that night. So if you have any connections, or you have any interest in helping with this, there are a lot of churches, there are a lot of different organizations that are helping to feed the hungry, to feed the poor, and to raise the awareness about the need in our own community for this kind of a program to collect, collect food. So that's, I'm not sure where it's going to be, but it's, it's March 13th, and it's a lovely dinner evening. Anything else? Okay. Then we'll go on to, are there any announcements by the treasurer? No, I don't have any. Okay, thank you. Item seven, boards, commission, and committee appointments. Do you want to talk about that?
We're moving that to public hearings, I believe.
Public hearing, okay. The next item is consent calendar. These are a list of relatively minor items that are taken in one motion rather than a motion for each one of them. They're pretty much housekeeping items, and is there anyone, that anyone would like to pull?
I will move the consent calendar. Second.
I need to pull item A.
A. Just for, just for a separate vote.
That was A?
Yeah.
Just for a separate vote.
Oh, okay.
Anyone else like to pull any other items? Jamie?
Madam Mayor, I did want to know, a minor correction on the budget calendar, the community grant deadline. We have been able to extend it to March 7th, and in the budget calendar, currently shown as February 26th, we were able to push that back a little bit further.
Okay.
So the final budget calendar will reflect that new date.
Okay, good. Okay, was there a motion to approve?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Any of the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Which one carries? We'll go ahead with A right now.
Move approval of A?
Ed wants to talk about it.
No, I just need to abstain, because I wasn't present, so that's all.
Is there a second?
Second. All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Abstain.
Abstain. Okay, thank you, Ed. Thank you very much. Okay, item number nine, number nine A, presentation regarding community choice aggregation.
Madam Mayor, we have a presentation tonight from the now-retired, I believe, former executive officer for the...
Ecology Action.
Ecology Action, a local nonprofit here that does a lot of good work in our community. Ginny approached me several months ago, talking a little bit about this CCA, and what it could mean for Capitola, and her efforts regionally to get something in place. And I thought it was, sounded like a very interesting opportunity for the city and for this region as a whole, and asked Ginny to come and talk to you a little bit about how that might look. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ginny, who has a short presentation for us tonight.
Thank you, welcome.
Hello, Mayor Harlan, and city council members. Thank you so much for your time this evening, I really appreciate it. In addition to the 23 years I've served in this community in the nonprofit sector, 17 of which was in environmental work, which I recently retired from, I have recently taken a position, which Jamie doesn't know this, so it's a surprise to him, with the new supervisor Bruce McPherson, to work on environmental policy and programs and initiatives in our community that are really critical. And this is, in my mind, one of the top ones. He's very excited about it, as are some of the other supervisors, your supervisor, and I'm hoping you'll get excited about it, too. So let's talk a little bit about what is community choice aggregation. I'm not sure which one I'm doing here, so, okay. Am I controlling, or are you controlling it?
You are.
Okay, and do I just, so we hit the...
Spacebar?
Spacebar.
Arrow.
I think.
Arrow.
Arrow.
One of the buttons, just keep hitting.
There we go. Okay. What community choice aggregation is, has been on the books now in state legislation for over 10 years. It allows cities and counties to pool their residential business and municipal electricity loads, and to purchase power or generate it on behalf of the folks that live in their community, and the businesses that live in their community. Energy distribution, transmission, repair, and customer service functions remain with PG&E. They do not go away, they're a partner with community choice aggregation. This is not a municipal utility, this is what this particular slide shows well. A municipal utility is something that, for example, Palo Alto has, or Sacramento. This is not that. PG&E would not go away, they would continue to do exactly what they're doing now, except the electricity part of their business would go to the local joint powers authority, if it is feasible for our community, and they would either purchase it, or generate it, or both. So why would we even want to consider community choice aggregation? There is any number of reasons. The economics are really intriguing, and I'm putting those before the environmental, because the environmental are very, very significant. But the economics have to be there in order for us to make the case for any kind of initiative. First of all, this is a revenue-based, not taxpayer-supported initiative. The money is already being spent, folks are already writing their checks to PG&E for electricity, so that money and that revenue is already in our community, and it's not something that your council, or your general fund, or any part of tax support would have to support in any way. It's a value, there's a great deal of value of redirected revenue into our local community, and that could be millions of dollars over time. And one of the things that we want to do is do a Phase 1 technical study to tell exactly this council what those, that money would be over a period of time. It's a great opportunity to do local distributed generation, which means pulling solar, wind, and other kinds of renewable generation on the rooftops of our community, and to do energy efficiency programs, which create local jobs. Those are real local jobs. And it does drive the market to be more competitive. Again, PG&E doesn't go away, they are providing all of these gas services, and if the joint powers authority that runs the CCA is out procuring electricity, it does have to be, the folks that are selling it have to be much more competitive. The environmental attributes are really, excuse me, it's been a long day. Environmental attributes are really, really great. This is the number one thing that we could do to lower our greenhouse gas, other than everyone getting an electric car and having it solar powered. If there's anything else that we could do to make our greenhouse gas reduction goals in this community, Santa Cruz, Monterey, and the entire central coast, and in the state, community choice aggregation is it. The EPA has already said, and I'll say this, actually point this out in another slide, that one of the counties that have done community choice aggregation have lowered their greenhouse gas emissions more significantly than any other community in the country. One of the things that is really important is this allows consumer choice and local control. This is really important. That's local control over electricity rates, where we buy our, where and where we buy our energy, our electricity, where it's generated, it can be local, or we can buy it elsewhere, and that's really important. We don't have that choice right now, and the transparent accountability to a public agency doing this for the public is much more than an investor in utility. What the key features of community choice aggregation are, you won't really notice a whole lot of difference. You're still going to get your PG&E bill, so it's the biggest change you'll never notice. By law, by legislation, if we were to choose to do a community choice aggregation, special district in our, in our community, here in Capitola, or with other governments, it would have to be a joint powers authority. It could be an existing government agency as well, in some other communities, it's the Water Agency. Again, PG&E continues to provide all the services they're providing now, only they're procuring or generating the electricity. The CCA electricity charges appear as a new section on your PG&E bill, so it's just another line that says, whatever we decide to potentially in the future, name our CCA, it's just another line on your regular PG&E bill. And all the customers in Capitola, if you choose this as a good, eventually as an option, they can stay with PG&E, they don't have to go with the CCA. So that's extremely important. And if they opt to go with the CCA, they can go back to PG&E. So full choice, consumer choice, all the way around. So why is this economically feasible? How can this be cost competitive with an investor in utility as large as PG&E? For one thing, you would diversify your portfolio approach where you get your electricity from. You would look at the local generators of renewable power. For example, our landfills generate renewable power, they generate methane gas, many of them are gearing up, the Marin landfill where Capitola sends their garbage, they're gearing up to generate another, electricity in other ways. A JPA, a joint powers authority, has low overhead and a nonprofit status, it's a government agency. We don't have to pay shareholder profit margins, we don't have to pay million dollar salaries. We do also have the option of doing low borrowing costs to do, to do all of our due diligence. Tax exempt financing is one option, it's not the only option. And we can, eventually, the community choice aggregation, a local CCA, can self-generate power through local facilities. And again, that's the job generator. So it's been done. There are four counties in our state that have formed CCAs, energy authorities, and one has made it a success, and that's the Marin Energy Authority. The other ones that have formed them have been, San Francisco just did it recently, Sonoma County, with some other cities, and there is one in the Central Valley, which is not active at this moment. It's been formed, but they're not providing energy. Marin Energy Authority started out 30 months ago with 14,000 customers, they now have 91,000 customers. Their portfolio now is a 50% renewable portfolio. That was a goal over 10 years, and now it's, it's actually a reality. In eight months, their greenhouse gas reductions exceeded all other Marin County programs combined. And at their full rollout, the reduction rate will exceed Marin's AB-32 targets in less than three years. So they are approaching all of their AB-32 targets, and that's targets for greenhouse gas reduction by the year 2020. They're going to receive that, they're going to reach those in another six months, because they've been live for 30 months. The Environmental Protection Agency has said that they're the second community in the U.S. to reduce greenhouse gas emissions so dramatically. The improved cost, improved cost effectiveness, their rates are the same as PG&E, it is not a premium. In 2011, they are redirecting, they did redirect $16 million of ratepayer electricity revenues back into Marin, back into the JPA, and in 2020, they're ramping up to put... revenues back into Marin, back into the JPA, and in 2020, they're ramping up to put $75 million back in to the JPA. This is an important piece, a very important piece. This is a complex thing if we decide to do it eventually, but this idea to generate revenue, this revenue generation that can stay in our community is a huge self-sustaining element of CCA, and probably the most exciting part of it besides the environmental impacts. So what do we do? Is it right for our community? We don't know yet. It's really exciting, it's very intriguing, um, but we do need to do our due diligence. So we need to conduct a first technical study, it's called a feasibility study, and what does that do? It does a cost benefit analysis of multiple scenarios and options, it does look at local supply and resource analysis, where can we generate renewable, um, energy, uh, does look at procurement options, how can we procure energy, um, both internal and external to our community. It talks about and compares rate and price modeling with the PG&E, um, rates, and does an analysis. It would tell this council, um, what kind of jobs and economic development opportunities would be there, and what kind of projections we can expect to create those local jobs. Greenhouse gas reduction, emission reduction projections, um, how would a CCA actually help Capitola make their greenhouse gas reduction goals, and identify all of the rest of the startup costs and financing options to finance the startup costs if in fact, um, it did look like a feasible, um, program or initiative to go forward with. The estimated timeline to do this feasibility study is somewhere up to six months once we start, the estimated cost is somewhere around $150,000 for the four cities and the county of Santa Cruz, if we were to do it together, which is relatively affordable. Um, and we don't expect to have funding from your general fund, no general fund impacts, um, this is part of, um, the deal that we're going to raise the money in the private sector and with the state of California through philanthropic dollars. We are in the process of getting a, um, a financial fiscal sponsor, and a nonprofit fiscal sponsor, our community foundation, um, board has considered that, and, uh, we're going to be looking at the local business community for much of this money. So I'd be happy to ask for any questions that you have, but the question before the council tonight is, um, taking the recommendation of your, um, public works director and your city manager, that Capitola participate in this feasibility study to see if it's the right thing for our community.
I have a few questions.
Yes, Michael.
Always great to see you, Ginny.
You too, Michael.
No one knows how much you've done to this county, for this county, it's wonderful.
Thank you.
Um, I've been involved and I've observed various, um, consolidated power purchasing and distribution across the country, and, um, there's always the ability to provide the end users, the citizens of Capitola and the county of Santa Cruz, Monterey, with lower rates because of the bulk purchasing, which leads to my second question, the 16 million and then the, and the 75 million to Marin, what will that go to do, and I'm in hope that we're not, um, inventing a new bureaucracy, that we will feed with the money that we save and rather pour this money back into the fact that we can provide lower rates for everyone.
I think it's an excellent point. There are CCAs that are formed in the Midwest, per your point, Michael, that absolutely were formed for one purpose, save ratepayer money. Now, they're buying their, their, their energy very dirty, it's coal and nuclear, and we don't want to do that here, that's not what we, that's not one of our purposes, but certainly once the CCA, if it's feasible and it's up and running, and once those startup costs are paid back, and by the way, there are a few million dollars of startup costs beyond the feasibility study, but you can borrow that money, you can pay it back with interest, which Marin has done, Marin Energy Authority, then now you're starting to generate local money, and what do you do with that money? And the energy authority would have, would be a local government agency that would be able to transparently with the community participating, decide on how they want to spend that money, and I, I would imagine that rates would be on the table, and it, that would be one thing. I would also hope that we would invest in energy efficiency and local renewable generation so we get local jobs.
Thank you.
Other questions? Dennis?
Ginny, could you explain on an individual household, um, contemplating putting solar panels on their house, how it works today as to how it would work under this, under this system?
Excellent question, I just did that, I just put that on my house, and, um, fortunately, I'm making all the electricity that I need for my house, it's too big of a house for my husband and I now, but, okay, so I, I, I'm producing all I need, and PG&E will not buy my surplus for much. So if you have a local joint power authority with a CCA, we can offer folks who want to put, and businesses, both residents and some businesses, if they will sell us their surplus electricity, we can offer them a fair rate, much more than the IOU, that's another option.
What, what other advantage is that not every, um, not every house can have a solar panel? There's reasons why your house is too small, your exposure isn't great, and one of the nice things about the CCA is that a policy decision the CCA board could make is that they're going to strive to provide more green, green power today than PG&E does. That's what Marin Clean Energy has done, they're currently providing 50% of their power as clean energy. If we formed one, we could go for that target, we could go for another target, so in effect, if what your goal of putting the solar panels on your roof is, is to have clean energy coming into your house, that's why you're putting the solar panels on the roof, the CCA would let us do it on a community-wide basis rather than you having to do it as an individual. So that, there's those two advantages, one, if you put them up there, you have the potential, if you overgenerate, to sell it back at a better rate, but two, is if you want to but can't, there's also an opportunity to get cleaner energy in your house.
Beyond everything else I mentioned, why I'm so intrigued is, for those of you who know me well, know that, um, I like things that change the game significantly for the future. This is a legacy project, if we can make this work for our community, it makes our community very, very self-sustaining, and that's very intriguing to me, and the economic element of it is unique. You don't see this very often in a really, really nice environmental project, so, and, and the money's already there, you're not going out and generating new money, the money's already being spent, and not necessarily for the kind of electricity that we would like to see. In addition to individual businesses and residents being generators, your landfills, Marin Landfills, Salinas Valley Soil Waste Authority, and your Air Quality Control District, all of the heads of those three agencies are very excited about this because, first of all, Air Quality Control District, they're in charge of making sure our air and everything is clean, they want to see greenhouse gas reduction, reduction emissions, um, but our landfills are generators, and they would love to be able to sell that generation to the local community rather than selling it to PG&E.
Sam?
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, thank you Ginny, I mean, it is truly, uh, an intriguing concept and, uh, attractive to think about having more local control over our energy, uh, production and consumption. I'm still a little unclear about the potential sources of the sufficient amount of reliable, dependable, um, energy. You mentioned the landfills as generators, um, I'm not sure if that source in and of itself would be sufficient, um, or, uh, so, could you speak a little bit about what are the other potential sources? Um, I'm not sure how, I mean, how they get aggregated and purchased, um, and, um, if we ultimately needed to fall back to, uh, the PG&E as a backup source, would that still be available to us?
Yes, so the, the, the landfills are wonderful local generators, but they absolutely would not generate enough, um, local renewable energy, you're absolutely quite right. So part of this feasibility study is actually analyzing what we are able to generate locally. So it's actually saying, okay, what are we currently generating locally, and what is possible? So where can we put those solar panels, where can we put those, um, those wind generation that wouldn't harm the environment and so forth? What's possible? Where can we find biogas and we can generate that, and that would be a big one from the landfills? So what's the quantity of that versus what do we use? What's our load? And then what are we going to be able to procure locally right out of the gate? And what will we have to procure elsewhere outside of our community that's green? And then how do we backfill that because it still may not be enough? So essentially, what I see happening here, my guess, based on all the feasibility studies I've read and what, and what Marin Energy Authority did, was I can see us doing this in phases. I can see initially having a community choice aggregation JPA here that would procure as much green energy that was affordable and reasonable for our ratepayers out of the gate, just the way PG&E does it right now. Right now, our renewable, um, portfolio of PG&E is 17% of our power, so even if we could have, be a procurement JPA and raise it up to 25% and keep the same rates, that would be terrific. And then, phase one, phase two is, okay, now we've paid back our loans with interest, starting to generate revenue, we've built a basis of a very solid organization that's not too bureaucratic, is very transparent, and then how do we start, you know, looking at, taking advantage of where we can put local generation and incentivizing that? So I see you built, you're not going to get out of the gate with 100% local renewable generation, that's not realistic. San Francisco would like to do that, they've articulated that. It's very expensive, and I don't see that as being a particularly practical approach. Um, I could be wrong, and we'll study that in the feasibility study, and then you'll be able to see what it would look like if we did 100% renewable generation, whether it was internal or external to our county. My guess is, it'd be pretty expensive out of the gate, but you can, you can start going toward that.
All right, thank you.
Are there any questions from the audience? Anyone here that has a, has a quick question?
Hi there.
Please, you need to please come up to the microphone so that the people at home can hear you, thanks, speak right into the microphone.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Wise-West, and I attended the CCA.
Could you address the council, please?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Um, I attended the CCA, uh, at the County Commission on the Environment, and it's not entirely clear to me who is leading the effort, who will perform the feasibility study, um, could, perhaps that question could be answered?
Certainly.
Thank you.
So, um, to make a very long story short, when I retired from, um, environmental nonprofit service, I was approached, because this has been around for 10 years, it's been discussed with various planning and public works departments and city leaders and city councils and so forth, lots of people have wanted to try this for quite a while, but were, didn't want to be the first out of the gate, and, um, after, basically last April was approached, um, by several folks who had been working on this in the city and the county of Santa Cruz, and they asked me to step in and see if I could make that happen, or make this happen, um, as an environmental community leader. Um, of course, on a volunteer basis, I said, okay, no good deed goes unpunished, of course I'll to help with that. So I went around and I talked to various folks like Jamie and city managers, um, council members, uh, board of supervisors, et cetera, to see if there really was solid support for trying to move forward for a feasibility study, and there seemed to be. So I put up an application together, again, as a volunteer, to get a fiscal sponsor which is being considered and is just, just about done. Um, and I basically had made a promise that I would, um, lead this with the city and counties that wanted to participate with their staff, I would help them technically as a volunteer and through feasibility study. In the meantime, I was approached by Supervisor McPherson to serve on his staff and work on this under the umbrella of a supervisor's seat. So this sort of evolved as to who was driving the process. Right now, we've got formed a technical advisory committee on which we hope that you will send Jamie to serve or his surrogate, um, that will drive this process, so each city and county in our region that wants to participate in this feasibility study will send a representative to that TAC, um, and I will serve on the TAC as, uh, a county employee and as an environmental community leader and, um, help and be, and drive the process to raise the money for the feasibility study, which was again a promise I made, um, and then once we get through feasibility study, that study comes back to you as your council, and you'll be reading it, asking your questions, doing your due diligence, to decide if you want to go to the next phase. So right now, it started out as a sort of a loose group, now we have a formal TAC, and we hope that you participate.
Thank you.
Is there any questions?
Yes. Great. Thank you, thank you very much. Are there any other questions from anyone in the audience?
I would ask that, you know, electricity is as vital as water and air, and try when the power is out for any amount of time, and I think having it necessarily be, if it was just going to be cost neutral, I mean, we all remember the deregulation debacle, you know, at the end of Pete Wilson's term, and, you know, Mike involved with electricity. I think some of this is pie in the sky, but, um, I lived in Sacramento when they kept putting it on the ballot to close Rancho, uh...
Maraga?
The, I forgot the name of it, the power plant up there, and then your rates tripled, and they still had smud. So, I think that Mike's issue, that the, the driver should be to, for sure not have the rates go up, but anything you could do to get them to go down, and I would hope we wouldn't kill any birds with any windmills. Uh, so I, I think that, you know, some of it sounds really good, but I don't think people consider how important electricity is until they don't have it, or until you have to do this with your limited funds, and we've got a lot of limited fund people in Capitola.
Thank you very much.
Public hearing, any public comments?
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Um, just want to, uh, add in here, you know, I, I took a look at the, at the model that's working up in Marin, and, you know, this is a great concept, and I think we definitely should, you know, look into it. Shell Energy's running that program up there right now, and, uh, it seems to be having good numbers, and, and the goal, like you said, is to provide as much renewable energy as possible, and, and, and you say they're at 50% now?
They're 50% now.
Yeah, and, and the thing is, is, you know, it's, it's always going to be a challenge, you know, as just mentioned, to, to maintain or to increase renewable energy and to keep the, the price down. So, um, I just want to keep that in mind, that, you know, we, there is a stable system that we have, which was just mentioned, and, uh, I, I think it's something that we should look into with this program, but, but you have to keep in mind that sometimes the cost of renewable energy gets more expensive, especially depending on the percentage you want to try to establish for your community, but, uh, I think it's okay that we, you know, proceed with the project and look into it, and, uh, just keep aware of the numbers that are available.
I think it's an excellent point, I mean, you know, I'm an environmentalist, but renewable energy is not always the cheapest energy, for sure, um, but one of the advantages of the CCA is you do end up fixing your costs over a period of time, and so, versus the IOU who is allowed to raise their costs. So, um, when you look at the cost of renewable energy, you have to look at it over, at the lifetime of whatever the installation is, or whatever the, the resource or the generation resource is. But again, this is why we want to do our due diligence, um, you know, sounds great, let's check it out. Is it good for our community? Let's, let's, let's study it, and then we can talk about it more.
Thank you very much. I forgot to say that this is a public hearing, which I have opened, and we have had, uh, two speakers. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? If not, then I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council, who would like to start first?
I'll boost that recommendation.
Thank you very much.
I'll second.
With a caveat, Mike lets me put my solar panels on his roof, he has better exposure.
If I could get the sun to shine on my roof, you could have the whole roof, trust me. Or if the state lets me cut down 12 trees, that's another story. I'd like to just make some general comments, this has been a, a project near and dear to my heart, it all makes sense, and to Sam's point, to understand how we get electricity, it's like a big giant swimming pool we all draw from, and we buy electricity to throw into the pool from different sources, depending on what's available and what's not, and it's almost like a, a spot market on electricity. So this is, this really works, and, uh, collaterally, we have the largest energy source on the planet, uh, at the edge of our city, and that's the, uh, the Pacific Ocean and its wave action, and it's been worked on for years and years, but the waves never stop. So consider that, and I'm wholeheartedly in favor of this.
Other comments? Questions? All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much, Ginny. Next item is a public hearing review representation on city council, representation on various county, multi-county boards and commissions, and, um, we have a staff report on that, and I can, we can go through it.
I can introduce that if you'd like.
Certainly.
Mayor Harlan.
Certainly.
Each year in December, it is customary for the city council to review the list of city boards and commissions and committees, as well as appointment to county, multi-county boards and commissions. At the last meeting, December 13th, appointments were made to various multi-county and county boards, with the exception of the advisory council of the, um, of the aging on, excuse me, in the area of aging, and the community television of Santa Cruz County, and Board of Directors, and the community action board of Santa Cruz County. Since it has been several years since the city council has conducted a comprehensive review of the city's internal advisory bodies, the council may choose to discuss these committees. And I also wanted to make, mention that at the December 13th meeting, uh, there was appointment made to the Metropolitan Transit District Board, however, the city's representative, Ron Graves, term does not expire until December 31st, 2004, so staff is recommending rescinding the appointment of Councilmember Baterv to the board. So we can move on with, uh, making the appointments if you like?
Certainly. We have, um, the Art and Sight Review Committee, which is continuing, no new applications were received, the Art and Cultural Commission, which took unanimous, unanimously recommended the reappointment of three members. of three members. No new applications were received. The incumbent will continue to serve until, through that, and Mike is going to continue on that. You volunteered for that. And so with no changes on that committee. And the Commission on the Environment, we have a represent, we have a, an opening for a youth member, and I don't think that the bylaws say what youth is...
Under 30.
Under 30, okay.
Youth keeps getting further and further away.
It does. And we have, we had two applicants, and I talked to both of them, and I am very happy to appoint Monica Marlat, and Elizabeth Lynn lives in Santa Cruz, and I told her that we don't usually appoint people outside of Capitola for these. She's a UCSE student, and she has some great experience.
Madam Mayor, we may, we may have some, we may have some discussion on that. I wonder if we could take each of the committees and commissions and, and vote on them one at a time, and then we can just kind of strike them out? Like, I'd like to make a motion on the Ark and Site that we reappoint the incumbents.
I would like some discussion about the function of Ark and Site. Is this the time to do that, or are we?
Certainly.
Okay. The Ark and Site Review Committee reviews basically any item that requires to go to the Planning Commission. I don't, I don't really feel it's necessary for Ark and Site to deal with issues such as second-story remodel additions, that type of thing. I think it's more functional as a commercial, commercial addition, or change in, in land use, that type of issue. But, but I, I don't know that, that Ark and Site needs to be as functional, or meet every two weeks, and, and perform a function that actually the Planning Commission itself does quite well, so.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I just wanted to mention to you that we have an item later on the agenda where we're going to be talking about the city's zoning regulations. And under that item, we have listed that the Architectural and Site Review Committee, and that whole process is something that we're interested in reviewing as part of our new zoning ordinance, because from a staff point of view, we do agree there might be some applications that necessarily don't need to go to the Architectural and Site Review Committee and to the Planning Commission. So at this point in time, I would recommend that you keep in place the existing committee that we have, and you will be during this year, having the opportunity to decide how you want that committee to function.
That's, I'm fine with that. I'm just...
Okay.
There's a, there's a motion to approve the...
Back to us at a later date.
Right. Approve the Ark and Site Committee, Commissions, Ark and Site Review Committee's membership.
I'll, I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I would like to make a motion to continue the incumbents as recommended by the Art and Cultural Commission.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I have a question, Madam Mayor, regarding the Art and Cultural Commission, or sorry, the Commission on the Environment, and I do take it very seriously, and I did hear with great interest what was sent to us in letter form and also what was said at the podium. I think that, in view of the fact that the council members have appointments, everyone except the council member who sits on the committee, and we have no one to appoint, I don't want to do away with this committee. I think it's, it's critical. But I believe that if we make this committee a blue-ribbon committee with a one-year sunset date, it will be free from the Brown Act, and it will be able to be more flexible and fluid, and we can do things like have people from outside of the city, more than one youth member. It would be much more functional. It would still be a city standing committee, not a standing committee, but a city blue-ribbon committee. It would still report to the council, and yet it wouldn't have all these restrictions on it, and that could be done, from what we hear from the, the city attorney, for a one-year period, and at the end of that year, we'll evaluate their, their work product. That's my proposal.
You can't do that tonight, though, because that wasn't, that wasn't agendized, but we could bring it back as a properly agendized item.
And we can, we can hold, I mean, there's no one to appoint, so, except for the youth member that, that the mayor has appointed, you know, there's nothing to do, but I will, I will second your recommendation on the youth member, and it's...
I said Monica, but I meant Madeline.
It's Madeline, right.
I'm sorry.
But we can bring that back to the later, the next meeting and, and discuss. I'm trying to give the Art, the Commission on the Environment, the ability to be more effective, and to be open to more members, to be, to meet and not have to notice their meetings, not have to have, you know, access, public access, not to have to follow the Brown Act, to, to, and yet to still bring us the work product that they've been so successful in the previous years.
We can talk about that at the next meeting.
So we can agendize that and bring back some additional information for you.
Okay. So I would like to appoint Madeline Marlat to that, as a youth member.
Okay.
She's unable to, to go to the next meeting. Are they going to have the meeting this, at the end of this month?
I think we have one next week.
It's not, it's later on. It's the 20...
I'm hearing, singing no.
26 or something.
26, okay.
Shall we have that meeting, or shall we just postpone that meeting?
So let's have that meeting, because that'll give the, that committee time to, to fill out what staff recommendation or what's going to come back to us at that time.
Okay. Madeline has final, so she's unable to, to attend that meeting, but I told her that that was final.
We'll go ahead and send her the information and get her started.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, we also need a second, and also this will include reappointment of the incumbents.
I will second, I will second the youth member, and we have, let's see, a Harlan appointment and two out-large members that are requesting reappointment. Is that true?
Yes.
Then I will, I will second, or make the motion for that, for the mayor's appointment to be approved, as well as the two incumbents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the Finance Advisory Committee, and Ed has an appointment on that. Let me get to my list. What page is that on?
Madam Mayor...
Page 86 of the packet.
Madam Mayor, if I may, is it your intention to serve on the Finance Advisory Committee?
Well, I would...
As a mayor and vice mayor generally.
I would like to, but the, it meets on Wednesday, doesn't it?
Uh, Tuesday.
Tuesday. I work every Tuesday, so I am unable to do that unless we change the day, and everybody else, I think, is pretty set in their schedule, so I will defer to you if you'd like to do that.
Oh, I've been on it for long enough that, you know, I'm immune to its ups and downs, so, that's the nicest way I can say it.
Is there another council member that has a burning desire to serve on this committee? Has a strong interest, I should say. I meant to say.
Well, Sam is on it because he's a vice mayor.
As a vice mayor, I guess I would be on it, and if, but if there are no others that are so inclined, I will fulfill my obligations.
Okay. So Sam will be on it, and then Ed?
I was confused. Are you saying that you were gonna, you were gonna take the position on that?
I may take the position, but you still have an appointment.
Right, okay, my, my appointment is Gary Snelson.
Okay.
Who I believe submitted an application.
He did.
Okay. So Sam, you, you're going to be on it.
Right, which means I don't believe I have an appointment if I'm on it, is not...
Mike gets an appointment.
Wait.
Wait.
So Sam is going to be on it.
Yeah.
So he doesn't get an appointment.
Right.
So we have only three other appointments, and that is the Norton appointment, the Harlan appointment, and the Batov appointment.
Yes.
And we have that.
Okay.
I would love to appoint someone as well, but, you know, I don't think that happens.
Okay. Okay, so did we take a role?
No, well, Councilmember Norton, who you, you are...
I'm going to stay with Nathan Crosses.
Stay with Nathan.
Please.
And what about Will O'Sullivan?
He's agreed to continue. And Christine McBroom has agreed to continue. And Kim is on the, as the treasurer.
So I will move, I will move, I will move the appointments as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Historical Museum Board requires no action at this time. Library Adcock Committee does not need any action at this time. The next item is the Parking and Traffic Commission.
I will like to reappoint Nels Westman as my appointment to the Traffic and Parking.
I think the, all the people that are currently serving have agreed to serve again, so there aren't any changes there. We have an appointment for a village resident that is vacant, and so we can consider accepting more applications for that.
I would like, since we have a new application, I would like to present John Mottarella for the village resident position.
Well, Ed has an appointment.
Uh-oh.
If he wants to announce.
Actually, I, I'd like to appoint John Mottarella as my appointment, and I'd like to nominate Steve Ross as the village resident.
Oh.
El Camino Media.
I'd like to wait till I talk to him and meet him. I haven't met him yet.
Has he done, he has done an application, has he?
Um, no.
Okay.
It's not.
So let's put that off till the next meeting.
He submitted a letter requesting that he wanted to participate in the committee, and I dropped off an application at his house, but I don't believe it's turned in yet.
So perhaps just for form, we'll do all the other appointments.
Yep. And we'll have a chance, we can interview him.
It wouldn't hurt to get somebody from the other side of town. We're really heavily loaded here with Riverview.
It's a village resident.
Yeah.
Is what...
So, yeah, somebody on, like, El Camino Media is village.
That's who this guy is.
I guess is that we're spreading it out a little bit for the, for the membership on us.
I'm, I'm, I'm talking about just...
Steve Ross, right?
Steve Ross is a village resident. We, we can't have someone from the other side of town.
No, I think that's fine.
Oh.
I'm just saying that it's good to have somebody from the other side of town, is what I'm saying.
He's calling El Camino the other side of town.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I mean, the other side of the village.
The rest of the committee lives on Riverview.
Right. Got it. Yeah.
Is Gary here tonight? I understand Gary's moving out of town.
Uh, Michael?
Yeah.
Wessel?
He's moving out of Capitola, yeah.
Gary Wessel's been moving out of town.
But he's, he's a, he's a village business owner.
He doesn't have to live in Capitola for that.
Right, right. Just was wondering with, with his move, if he was still interested in being on this committee.
So with the exception of the village resident, I would like to make a motion to reappoint all those listed, with the addition of Councilmember Batov's nomination of John Mottarella.
Second.
And the Planning Commission has not decided on anyone yet?
They don't meet till next week.
Right, so they'll be, they'll be nominating someone. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And I didn't catch the second on that?
I made the second.
Oh, okay.
Okay, the next item is the Advisory Council of the Area Agency on Aging, the Seniors Council,
and I did not get two applications until recently, so I'd like to continue this one until the next meeting, so I can interview the two candidates. They both look outstanding, but I'd like to interview them first and talk to them a little bit about their experience and so forth.
And just for clarification, Madam Mayor, if I could ask the city clerk, it, it seems to me, on the worksheet, that Sandra Williams is reapplying, and that's not my understanding.
That's not my understanding either. Was that, maybe, maybe that was an error.
Could be a typo on that.
Let me, let me check.
My recollection was that Ms. Williams had indicated she was not going to continue serving.
Correct.
And in fact, I think she's resigned. She has resigned.
Yes, yes, she has.
Yeah. So we'll check on that.
I believe you are correct.
Yeah.
Okay, but that's, do we need a motion to continue that, or we're just going to wait on that one?
We can just wait.
Okay.
The next item is Community Television of Santa Cruz, and I'd like to reappoint Dory Steinman to that.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries. Next item is the Community Action Board, and we received two applications for this, and I would like to recommend, I don't have that here.
I think Finn Finley wants to be the, the member, and George Bud Winslow wants to be the alternate.
That would be my recommendation. I did talk to Christine Johnson Lyons today, and she said they've both been attending, and they've been active and are very good representatives, and so I would recommend that we appoint them.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to abstain. My wife works for the Community Action Board, so I won't participate in that vote.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item is Santa Cruz Metropolitan Transit District, and as we indicated, Representative Graves will finish his term, which expires December 31st, 2014. So we don't have to take any action on that because he has a term. The next item is...
I mean, I know Ed had spoken up at the last meeting. We had appointed him. I just want to make sure that he is fine with this now change.
I had a conversation with Ron Graves, yeah. And it was actually, it was, it was on, he, his terms went to 2014, and that was the correct thing to do in my mind, so, yeah.
Okay, so you're willing to defer to that? All right, thank you.
The next item is the Oversight Board for the Successor Agency, and...
I thought at the last meeting, it was agreed that I would continue on as the representative. I could be wrong, but I think we...
I think there's value, I think there's great value in that because of the complexity of the material, the information, and the process, and, and so forth, that we have someone there with some experience, because...
As long as your goal, Mike, is to end this thing.
2017, that's the...
That long?
I'm afraid so. There are, there are bills that we have incurred, so it's no one else's fault.
And my only other question that I forgot to talk about when we talked about the Commission on the Environment was that is...
Madam Mayor, I just want to, regarding the Oversight Board, do you want to finish that up?
Oh, yes.
I just want to make mention that the mayor appoints one mayor, one member representing the employees of the former Redevelopment Agency, and that was Ryan Bane, our senior planner, and he is available to continue on that, on the Oversight Board, so I would need a motion and a second on that.
So moved.
Madam Clerk, I believe it's the mayor's appointment, so the mayor just simply needs to stay.
Yes, because the mayor has the authority to...
Yes.
...appoint or serve.
Oh, I see, then we don't need a vote on that.
I will appoint Michael, and I will appoint Mr. Bane to that committee, and, and just continue the good work you're doing on that, that board. My question about the Commission on the Environment is, is Tiffany still here? She actually left.
No, she's just left.
I understand she might be moving away. I just wanted to see.
I don't think that she's moving away. She's indicated that she's going to be going to Hawaii to work on her dissertation, and that she will be gone. I believe the email I got from her said from January to June.
Just wondering whether we should have a, have her resign and appoint someone so that we have a full complement on that commission for the six months.
We're still missing four.
Yeah, we don't, we don't really wanna do a point right now.
There's no appointments.
Right. But I just wanted to bring that up.
We're gonna have a meeting later in the month where that commission will find out what's, who's staying involved and who is, Stephanie. We can come back.
Yeah.
And Madam Mayor, she said she was willing to be on Skype for those meetings and be involved when she's in Hawaii.
Okay. Living in Hawaii?
Well, she's gonna be gone for some time, so I'm, she will be living there temporarily.
Okay.
For further discussion.
Yeah, we can talk about that again.
Good.
So that concludes our appointments for tonight unless there's any other discussion about those. As I say, we'll bring back the Advisory Council, Area Agency on Aging, and the others at the next meeting. And thank you all very much for.
Thank you, Stephanie, for taking care of that. She really did a good job of contacting everybody.
Well, thank you. Thank you. It's always, it's always fun to talk to everybody and interview. One time, one time, we had, we had 17, and I had to interview 17 people in two weeks. And that was, that was, that was fun. Okay. So any public comments about any of those items? That was kinda quick we ran through. Okay. We'll go on to the next item, which is 9C, a discussion regarding updating the city's zoning ordinance. Stat report, please.
Good evening again, Mayor and Councilmembers. The council had requested that we have a discussion regarding the new zoning ordinance that the city is going to be considering adopting as part of the general plan process. And I wanted to make it clear to everyone that the council is not approving anything tonight. This is a discussion about how the zoning ordinance will be coordinated with the new general plan. It also includes some suggestions that we've received from our consultants about some best practices that other cities are doing, that they think the city should consider. And a few items are there because your city staff works with the zoning ordinance in the Planning Department almost daily. And there are some areas of it that we have found to be rather troublesome or difficult to work with for not only staff, but the applicants. And so we think those are some areas you could, should consider looking at. Our goal in our new zoning ordinance is to have one that's easy to read and understand. I personally think a zoning ordinance ought to be a document that an average person can pick up and look at and understand what it's saying. And we want a zoning ordinance that streamlines the approval process for projects that conform to the zoning regulations. Oftentimes, someone comes in and wants to do something, and they conform in every way. And so we wanna try and streamline the process for those applications. We want a zoning ordinance that allows for good design. And that's a concept we spend a lot of time talking about with our consultants, because it is difficult to have regulations that create good design. But there are some things that you can do to try and encourage that. We want a zoning ordinance that reduces the amount of staff time needed to process minor applications. And we're saying that not because the staff doesn't wanna do as much work, but we wanna make certain that we're spending our time effectively and efficiently and have time to concentrate what are the projects that are of top priority to the city, not the council, as well as the residents. And we want a zoning ordinance that allows for some change to take place. We don't want an ordinance that is stagnant. Excuse me, I went the wrong way. We've gone through a process with the General Plan and the G-PAC Committee where we have looked at and have a draft land use map. And as you're aware, state law requires that your general plan land use map and your zoning map need to be consistent with each other. And I'm not going to spend a lot of time tonight going through the details on this. There are some changes. One of the major ones is along Bay Avenue, creating a zoning district there around the Nob Hill Center that will allow for development in that area. Changes combining the neighborhood commercial and the commercial residential district and cleaning up some other areas. But there are really no big changes as far as the general plan land use map is concerned. Some of the major changes that we're talking about regarding the processing of applications was what I mentioned on your item earlier, is modifying how the Architectural Insight Review Committee works in the process of what applications go to a group like that. We are finding that other agencies are much more involved in the development process. An example is trying to work with the Water District as far as water-efficient landscape plans are concerned. We've had a number of incidents recently where the planning commission has approved a project with a landscape plan. The applicant goes to get a water meter, and the Water District says, "We will not issue you one because you don't conform to our requirements related to landscaping." And the person's put in the position of then having to come back to the planning commission and, and going back and forth between these two agencies. So we, we hope that we can set up a process where early on, we're going to have discussions with those agencies, water, fire, sanitation, Zone 5. So the applicant, as well as the city staff, is going to know what those agencies are going to need to issue the necessary permits that they have to issue for a project to move forward. So more coordination there. We've also talked about the idea of when we look at modifying the Architectural Insight Review Committee, perhaps having a more professional committee with more than one architect or designer that would meet when there are large new development projects or large remodel projects. So we can perhaps get some better designs on those types of projects. Right now, with our current Arch Insight Committee, we only have one architectural professional on that group. And so it's sometimes difficult, architect to architect, to argue the design of a project. So we believe there's a way that we can, we can work to come up with a better system for the city of Capitola. Most of the applications that come in through the Planning Department in Capitola actually involve a single-family residential development. And what you see up there in the yellow is the policy that has been adopted or has gone through the G-PAC regarding what single-family residential districts are going to be. And you'll see that it's basically consistent with what the city of Capitola currently has. The one minor change is that while we have a general, our current general plan says that we will allow 10 units per acre in the R1 district, our zoning ordinance says that you have to have 5,000 square feet, lot size, to do it. And 5,000 square feet ends up equalling eight units per acre. So again, as I mentioned, state law requires the general plan and the zoning be consistent in those areas. So to be consistent with the general plan that we have now and what we're proposing in the new one, the lot size, we go to 4,300 square feet. There's only one small area in Capitola, and it's actually in Cliffwood Heights, where you have existing residential that's been developed, where you have lots that are more than 9,000 square feet. So that's an anomaly that we would deal with in some of our new design guidelines. Our new zoning ordinance is going to have to be consistent with state law allowing for transitional housing as a permitted use in the R1 district. That's a law that has been in effect for several years, and we haven't yet adopted it in Capitola. But when we have our new zoning regulations, we, we will want to, to do them. If anyone's read How We Measure Height, it's fairly convoluted, deals, deals with whether or not fill has been placed on the lot over the last 10 years. And you have to estimate what the natural grade would have been if there had been no fill. And it involves a number of calculations. So we want to simplify that process so it's easier for people to understand. We wanna have in our R1 development standards, individual neighborhood design standards. Right now in Capitola, R1 applies to the entire city, whether you live in Depot Hill, Cliffwood Heights, Riverview Terrace. And so we think those neighborhoods are sufficiently unique within themselves that there are some things that you will want to allow in one neighborhood that you may not allow in another neighborhood. An example of that would be that Capitola currently requires what is called by planners a wedding cake design for two-story houses. And what that means is that all second stories have to be set back 5% more than the first floor. And when you have a development like Cliffwood Heights, where you're talking about 7,000 square foot lots, you're talking about 14 feet between the houses, having this kind of requirement doesn't really accomplish anything and often limits good design for those types of remodels. You probably do wanna consider some setback when you're looking at the neighborhoods that have smaller lots like Riverview Terrace, where the average lot size is 2,800 square feet. So there, there are differences in neighborhoods, and we want to tailor the single-family zoning regulations for those neighborhoods. We're, we're looking at trying to come up with a way to move through more quickly projects that conform to the city's regulations and don't have a significant impact. The majority of the applications that come through the Planning Department right now are for additions to single-family residential homes. And some of those are significant, some of those are not significant. But for the smaller ones that don't increase the size of the home more than 50%, and conform to all of the city's zoning regulations, setbacks, parking height, we would like to look at a process where those could receive some sort of staff approval. We would figure out a way to notice the people who live around the project so they would have an opportunity to come down and see what's going on, but try and streamline that process. Another sort of technical area that we would like to look at is to simplify the calculations that we use for what we call floor area ratio. Basically, this is just how much area there is in a house on the first floor if it's single-story, if it's two-story, the first and the second floor. We do some things right now, like include basements. And there's some question about how much impact on a neighborhood having a basement has. And if you want to encourage things like front porches, which are open and not enclosed, perhaps that's something that you don't wanna count in the floor area ratio. So you could try and encourage people to do more of those design elements. We've talked about and actually had a number of discussions with architects who work on single-family homes about slightly increasing the height limit in the R1 district from 25 to 28 feet. And this is not to allow a lot of development, but simply to allow people a way to have better designs. One of the most troublesome items for staff is actually the bottom one. And that is that we have regulations right now which say that non-conforming building basically can be completely rebuilt if you leave 20% of the structure. And, and it's 20% of the value of the structure, excuse me. And trying to determine the value of what 20% of the remaining part of the building is, is, is a difficult feat for people who are experts in the field. It's almost impossible for your planning staff to accurately evaluate this. And so we, we want to simplify that and talk more about square feet of the building that's going to remain, or what portion of it is going to remain. And I took this photograph because we have two houses on Riverview Avenue that are currently being built. And I'm not real good with my photography, so you'll have to excuse that. But the home on the left side was considered an 80% remodel. And while if you lived in the neighborhood and drove by there, you saw that basically all of the house was ultimately torn down. There was a little piece left while they built the front, and then the back piece went down. And so it is, in all intents and purposes, a new house. But because it was a remodel, it got to keep its 15-foot-long driveway. The house next door to it was considered a new house, and so it meets all of the city's setback requirements. And the problem with having a 15-foot driveway, whether you have a Prius or whether you have a Suburban at the end, is that cars really cannot park in those driveways. And we have other parts of our general plan that we go at great length, talking about being a pedestrian-friendly city, how we want people to walk and not get in their cars as often as we do. And we have in our zoning regulations items that continue to perpetuate some bad design Capitola doesn't have a lot of area that's zoned, multi-family residential, but we do have some. We know that there's going to be a need for new, some new residential units in Capitola, even though we're basically a built-out city. So one of the things that we're looking at doing and considering is decreasing the lot size that's required per unit in the residential zoning district. And basically, we have three districts. We have a low, medium, and high. And in the low, what you would be looking at are 15 units per acre. Remember, in single-family, we were talking about 10 units per acre. So single-family's 10, low is 15, medium would be 20, and your highest density would allow up to 30 units per acre. The zoning district that gets a lot of conversation is the one in the Central Village. And you'll see in the yellow, again, this is the policy that went through the, the G-PAC Committee. And one of the things that it includes is the idea that we would develop new design guidelines in the village that would incorporate the design standards that have been developed through the general plan process for a hotel on the old theater site. And in the information that went to the workshop we had, and then back to the G-PAC Committee on this one, what you were talking about was the front part of the building being at 35 feet when it was set back, 25 feet, you'd look at 35 feet and ultimately go up to 55 feet, but retain a 10-to-12-foot buffer at the top of the bluff. And here are some sketches that were done when that process was going on, and they were talking about it. And you can see the various heights as they step back. On the bottom one of this, it sort of shows even more clearly that, that you would have a building that would be going back. And that would be included in, in the zoning regulations. What we require now, and what will continue to be required, is that all new development in, all new development in the village will need to provide parking. We're going, what's added in there is to encourage parking outside of the Central Village zoning district itself. And that parking could be within walking distance, which is typically considered to be between a quarter of a mile and half a mile, or there's some sort of shuttle system Talked about developing some kind of in-loop parking program, which would allow, if there were some extra spaces, created some intensification in the village. We've talked about redoing the Central Village design guidelines, because the Central Village design guidelines currently cover the topics of signs in the village, design of parking lots, and other standards. And in those design guidelines, you have the opportunity of, again, tailoring the designs that you would like to see in the village, tailoring some of the setbacks and, and how that would work in that particular zoning district. One of the things that's been talked about is changing the regulations that would allow for three-story structures when the third floor is architecturally sort of integrated into the building. And again, this would be, the details on how this would work would be included in those design guidelines. We do have a number of the. We do have a number of the buildings in the village right now which are three-story. This is an example of the superintendent's building, which is on the corner of Monterey and Capitola Avenue, which I think people are quite familiar with. And it does have a third story in it, and most of the third story on this one is sort of incorporated into the roof of the building, but it is there. We've actually have a new residential development down in the village, which is, they've made into a three-story building within the 27-foot height limit. And it is possible to do this on residential uses because the bottom floor can be quite low if it's only a garage or entryway. If you're talking about a commercial building, you typically want to have a 12- to 14-foot high ceiling on the first floor because commercial spaces want to have a larger ceiling height than a little more presence on the street that they're located. Another example of a three-story building that we currently have in the village is the area where Margaritaville and Stockton Bridge Grill are located. And on this one, you know, it's articulated so that facing onto the street, the structures are a bit lower, but as you go back, then the building goes up. We have a new building in town which was built, and it incorporates an architectural element which goes up. And that architectural element is taller than the 27 feet that we have in the zoning regulations. And the idea is to make it easier to have that kind of articulation or elements on buildings to create interest down in the village itself. We want to make certain that we, in our regulations, maintain the residential uses that are in the village. A lot of people say that, you know, village is only a village if it's residential and commercial. So we want to make certain that our new zoning ordinance doesn't discriminate or make it difficult for the people who live down there, for additional people to live down there. We want regulations that more easily allow for outdoor activities and special events to go on. The way our current zoning ordinance is set up, it's difficult, for example, for someone to have an outdoor dining area. They have to go through a whole special permitting process to do that. I put this here because one of the things that we all have to recognize in going through this process, particularly with the village itself, is that anything that we want to change from our current regulations that we have down there right now needs to be approved by the coastal commission. All of the zoning regulations in the Central Village are part of our local coastal plan. All of the Central Village is within the coastal zone itself, much of it in the appealable district to the coastal commission. And so we're working quite closely with their staff and our staff as we go through this process because we don't want to come up with a plan that is going to get rejected when it's presented to them to receive their approval. I'll go sort of quickly through this last part. As I mentioned, we have a neighborhood commercial zoning district which goes up Capitola Avenue from City Hall up to what we call the Upper Village. And we have a commercial residential district along Capitola Road, basically from 41st to the village area. And as part of the general plan discussion, the idea is to combine those into the same zoning district. They're really fairly similar in many ways and are rather eclectic in the kinds of uses and buildings that go on there. So we're talking about combining those two into one zoning regulation. Some of the other zoning districts, the professional office zoning district, we're talking about eliminating. There's actually only one small area in Capitola that has this designation, and that's where the AAA building is and the development across the street where you have the number of small, small buildings. And so that one would go away. We're not recommending major changes to the industrial park district on the non-conforming uses. Again, repeating myself, we want to change from value to square feet. So we have something that can accurately be calculated, that staff can go out and determine whether or not they're actually following the regulations for their remodel. Signs, we're looking at developing an ordinance that is consistent with state law because the current ordinance that we have is not. We're not looking at making any major changes to the size of signs that people are allowed to have. That seems to be working fairly well. We would like to encourage the halo-type signs rather than the internally illuminated signs because the halo ones seem to be, people seem to like them better, and they're more pleasing. And we want to make some modifications to the secondary dwelling unit ordinance. We've had some issues with that ordinance related to the floor area ratio. A lot of people have figured out that they can say they're going to have a secondary unit and get a bigger house, and then it never becomes a secondary unit. And so we would like to eliminate that sort of loophole in our regulations. We're going to keep our green building ordinance. Right now, our ordinance requires more than state law requires in that we require green building for tenant improvements. We want to set it up so that our ordinance automatically updates itself as state law becomes more stringent, rather than having to come back and do an ordinance amendment every time the state law changes. Capitola has a large archaeological, paleontological resource area. And right now, if you're going to do a second-story district, a second-story addition to a house that is in this district, the way the ordinance is written, it actually requires you to do a report, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense since you're not doing anything to the ground. So we want to change that ordinance and make it more effective and more reasonable. Capitola has a transient rental ordinance, and your ordinance actually requires each one of those to come in annually and get a use permit. And over the years, people have just stopped doing that. They just come in and annually renew their building permit. So I think we need to change our ordinance so it's consistent with the practice because there really is no need to annually review, have them come in for a new use permit. You can always bring, call up a use permit if there's a problem with one of them. And last but not least, we're getting a lot of inquiries. You know, we have subdivided a number of our mobile home parks and about what people can do in those mobile home parks and whether or not you can build a single-family house on one of the lots in the mobile home park. The city actually does allow single-family development in mobile home parks if you have a lot of more than 5,000 square feet. That number probably will go down to the 4,300 square feet to be consistent with the rest of the zoning regulations. But most of the lots that have been created through the mobile home park subdivisions are not large enough to do that. People still can put a modular home or a mobile home on there. And we get a lot of questions about two-story modular or manufactured homes in the mobile home parks recently. And currently, we don't have anything in our ordinance that prohibits two-story modular or manufactured homes. And at this time, we're not planning to add anything in there. So that's sort of a brief summary of the highlights of where we are in working with our zoning ordinance. As I said, our goal is to, most importantly, make it consistent with our general plan, to try and come up with some best practices that are being used in other communities so we can improve what we do. And there's always room for improvement. And to try and make it a process that adds value to someone coming in and going through it, not just having it be a bureaucratic process that someone has to get through if there's, if there's no need for that. And I'm happy to answer any questions about timeline or any of the items I discussed.
Madam Mayor, I have a question, and it's just in general. It's just, it tells us we're just receiving this report. Does the staff not want us to give you our take on many of the things you've just listed so that you can tell what's just not going to fly up here?
Right. I mean, I would, actually, I would love to do that. And I will confess, one of my anxieties is that the way we've sort of set up our process for, I mean, we've been working on the general plan. We've, we're actually starting the environmental documents, and, you know, it's going forward fairly quickly. And with the process that was set up, there haven't been many opportunities to sort of check in with the council and say, is this the direction that you would like to see us going?
You have good instincts.
So I, yeah, I would absolutely love to hear. And I got my pen and my piece of paper. I'm ready to write them down.
This is also a public hearing, and maybe, maybe we could open the public hearing first, and then we'll go on to council discussion. And then if you hear something you want to comment on afterwards, I'd give you a chance to do that. So is there anyone here who would like to comment on anything so far that they've heard? Might be very useful for us to hear before we have some deliberations and give you a chance to get up and stretch after sitting so long.
Did Nell's just make all those women get up and move out of the aisle?
She did.
She showed message about what happened back there. I'm really, I'm really sorry.
That was powerful.
Good evening.
Well, hopefully, they'll say something later, and then I won't feel anywhere near as guilty. Or I'll sit right on the aisle and get up every time they come back, anyway. As I read the staff report, I realized that just in the village section alone, there are some very serious changes under consideration that will dramatically and permanently impact the character of the village and the life of the people that live there. You know, I'm someone who's really interested in village issues. I went to the workshops about the village. And for example, I never really picked up on this idea of making the village a three-story village with all of the associated parking problems and traffic and congestion and the aesthetic issues that go along with that intensification. But this is just one small detail in what's going to be a large stack of documents, draft documents comprised of the updated general plan, a new local coastal plan, and a set of overhaul zoning ordinances. It's a huge amount of material to be read and to be digested and to be responded to by the public, by the planning commission, and by you, the city council. And make no mistake, the general public has every right to expect a transparent, deliberate, and fair process in reviewing these draft documents once they become available. So please, let's not fool ourselves into thinking that those few sparsely attended workshops and the equally sparsely attended G-PAC meetings reflect a successful effort to have engaged the public. It didn't happen despite the staggering cost. I have a few theories about why the public was a no-show, but the bottom line is, people will not really get engaged in this process until the draft documents are released, the newspaper articles start, the neighborhood associations begin meeting, and people finally begin to understand and to start talking amongst themselves about the practical consequences of what is being proposed. Assuming that you want to have a debate to be thoughtful and fair and to have your citizens feel that their views mattered, you might consider doing the following things. One, break down the documents and their public hearings into manageable, bite-sized pieces that the average citizen can read, digest, and respond to. Don't put the whole general plan up for a hearing. Give me three minutes to speak and call that a fair hearing. It's just not right. And number two, your timeline for public hearings at both the planning commission level and the council level seem very short. You need to slow this freight train down. I can appreciate more hearings and slower timelines mean more consultant fees and more staff time. But what can I say? You, and Jamie, and Derek, you set this $1.4 million Goliath underway, this extremely expensive update plan. So don't now say that we are going to ram these documents down the public's throat because we can't afford to finish it the right way. Once the draft documents are available, you need to get them out into the public and give us a practical forum to debate them. It will be a better document and much more reflective of what the citizens of Capitola really want. And isn't that what this is all supposed to be about? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Margaret Kinsler, and I agree very much so with what Nell's has already said here. I think that this idea of having three-story buildings in Capitola comes as a big shock. We read about it in the newspaper and see that, you know, this whole idea of increasing the intensity of the village and increasing the height of the village is just, you know, came from, out of blue for us. And it's something that I think there are a lot of people in Capitola that would be very much opposed to these ideas and that the manner of informing of this is, is not, you know, a way of communicating. It's, you know, just dropping it in the newspaper and then having a meeting to pass these kinds of things through just doesn't fly. I think we have, you know, Capitola is a beach community. We started off with little beach cottages and cabins, and there are still some of them, but every day, one disappears and some kind of monster building is put in its place. And now we're talking about taking these monster buildings and adding another story onto them and adding more dwellers and more cars. And I am just very much opposed to that idea. I think Capitola is, you know, congested and dense and high enough. And to make it any denser or higher, it would be, you know, take away the complete, the flavor of a small beach village. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. Stephanie, I just wanted to clarify. I thought I heard you say that you were going to comment on these proposals brought forth, and then the public would have a chance to comment on your comments after.
Right, right.
So I'll defer my comments till after yours. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak right now?
I'm always interested when cliffward heights is in there, and we're mentioned a number of times not to be a designer neighborhood. I think you did an excellent job on your, Susan, on your presentation, and I like the pictures. I agree that having a car that doesn't fit in the driveway is, we ought to be able to fix the zoning ordinances to do that. To have cars and trucks, and even in my neighborhood, people have trucks that won't fit in the driveway because the trucks have gotten so long, you know. So I look at that. I'm always hesitant about anything that really increases the size of things. The one I did not hear that I'm curious about, right now in our neighborhood, we have lots of houses, well, I won't say lots, but I can think of at least three, that are renting all the bedrooms, the living room, and the garage. And I wonder if there's anything in the zoning ordinances to, you know, address that sort of thing. But I'm all for anything that makes Capitola more walkable. I think the three stories in the village is, I think three stories strategically placed add interest. I think three stories as row after row of it does not add interest, but monotony and messes things up. Thanks.
Thank you. If you could give us the addresses where the garages have been converted to a bedroom, that would be very helpful. And as far as the renting of a bedroom or a living room, I don't think there's any regulations. regulations against that. Okay, I'm going to bring it back to council for discussion. Michael?
I got a quick list. A lot of it has to do with the word "no," but, my apologies, Susan. The wedding cake idea, whether it's Cliffwood Heights, or whether it's the Jewel Box, or wherever, it should not change. If we change that, we're going to wind up with a bunch of boxes. And we can't have that. Not the, the only reason that you said that we do that is because they're so close together. Well, that's not really the case. The reason we step the second stories back is to make the houses more attractive. Otherwise, we're going to wind up with two-story blocks. The staff passing less than 50%, absolutely not. It's my feeling it has to come to the planning commission. If you can see it, the planning commission has to rule on it. I don't care if you put-
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
That you go through, just so I understand. Do you feel the same way about those applications needing to go to the Architectural and Site Review Committee as well as the planning commission?
That's something that I don't have strong feelings on, but I think that some kind of peer review needs to be done architecturally, because many times, the planning commission asks the question, what did Arc and Site say about this? So we need to be able to answer that question. I don't care if you put 10-story buildings in the village. Just don't go over the height we have now. Okay? Leave the height alone. You know, I saw that the, the direction was to make it more developmentable, and more, if that's a word, and more architectural and stylish. Basically, it's just a way to get another floor. If it's, you know, set back from the street, like we're talking about the hotel where, and that hotel sketch only had two stories on the street, and not until you got considerably further back, it'd step up. I could go with that, but more than two stories on the sidewalk is going to make the village not what it is now. It's just, doesn't feel right. And I'm really stuck on the height there. I don't think there's any reason to increase the height from 25 to 28 feet in residences. I don't care what architects tell you, because we've seen some wonderful designs come through staying within the 25-foot height. There's no reason not to do that. I think that no basements and porches for the FAR is common sense. Why we count a basement when, you know, it doesn't really cover the lot? And then you had residential, multi-residential increases. There's a lot of increases in density in here, all of which bother me. You know, even if it's going from eight units an acre to 10, it really changes what the city becomes. Having lived in Manhattan, the more people you squeeze in, the angrier people get. It just happens, trust me. Also, you had an FAR of one in the, along Capitola Road. Is that, is that multi-use, commercial, residential? It was, it must have been a typo. But I don't know what the FAR is. I think it's, you meant to say it's 100%?
Yeah. Basically, what that says is that the square footage that's allowed in a, in a building is equal to the size of the lot. You may have it on a two-story-
So the FAR is 100%?
Right.
Okay, good. Let's see. And I think that we shouldn't encourage halo-lit signs. We should require them and just outlaw backlit plastic signs, period.
Okay.
We just do it. I'm not satisfied with just meeting state requirements in green building. I think we should go above and beyond it, continue with our green building. And I think Santa Cruz has done this. They've stepped it up several notches since we copied them last time. Let's copy them this time. The TROs, I think we could, this has more to do with enforcement than zoning, but the transient rental districts, we tend to get a little sloppy, and there seem to be homes that are going by the week that shouldn't be in certain areas. But that's not really a zoning, that's more of an enforcement issue.
That's more of an enforcement issue, you're correct.
And with regard to mobile home parks, there are single-family homes being built in them now, under 5,000 square feet. What they're doing is they're taking what would be a modular home and putting a concrete foundation on it and putting it up piece by piece, and for all intent and purposes, it's a, it's a single-family dwelling. So we have to take, because of what we have, all of these subdivided parks, I think the time has come for us to take back inspection authority and to get involved with what's going on in the parks. Just letting it go to the state, to the two inspectors that exist in the state, just isn't enough. And with regard to two-story modulators, no way. That's all. Sorry there was somebody "no's."
It's okay.
Nice work, by the way. Thank you.
That's great, Mike. Who would like to go next? Sam?
I'm happy to do that. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And again, by saying, you know, there's some things to like in these proposals. I think there's a lot to not like and to be concerned about. Mike kind of sketched out some of them that I share. And maybe I'll speak in kind of general and broad terms. The particular items that talk about coordination with other districts, about efficiency, maybe being able to move little projects, little remodelings, and I don't consider 50% to be little, but I think that those are legitimate. You know, as Sandy talked about, wanting to just put in a shower into her home, it seems like those kind of projects we could streamline for the benefit of the residents and therefore reduce the permit fees for those kind of projects. There are many others here that Mike has already identified that really go to, in effect, the character and the density and the quality of life for all of us in the community, and I would have great concerns about those. The ones concerning increasing density in the multifamily areas, and there are actually in the avenues quite a few of those. And just the thought of trying to increase the density in that neighborhood with the traffic issues and parking and just the number of units and the intended consequences that that imposes upon city services, I think that we should be very careful about making changes to those in the village. And certainly, you know, the height requirements, the three stories, that goes very, very much so to the, really, the character of the village and the city as a whole. And I think that I would want to be very protective of, of our, you know, our, our character as it is. I think that the processes that we've had, the zoning regulations that we've had, are what has maintained and contributed to that character. I would be very leery about mending those. We've seen that we have allowed buildings of interest that had variances on heights at, from time to time, and that could maybe still be the case. And where, you know, we would be able to allow that, but just to blanketly say we're now going to allow greater height, greater stories, which means that you could just get incremental push-up, I mean, growth. I mean, we see now, we've demonstrated that we have a 27-foot height, but allowed a 35-foot structure at one point. On the Arc and Site, I, I pretty much, I very much cherish the fact that we have not only people in the industry, but also a historian on that. I think that they lend a great deal to that effort. And, and the notion of just having professional architects be on Arc and Site, I would not support. And I think that we should have, I mean, look very carefully at if we're going to remove certain reviews from their purview. I think that they have added a great deal to the designs and the character of the community. Some of the concepts about, you know, the value and converting, are converting that, I think is very well taken, having a standard that is understandable and enforceable, and changing that to square footage. To me, I think that makes a lot of sense. And, let me just, so I, I think those are the items that, that I kind of reacted to. And, and I think I'll just leave it there. Madam Mayor, thank you.
Dennis?
Okay. Thanks. I was involved with the Pleasure Point Design Program that they put together for Pleasure Point. And if we are considering to do design criteria for each neighbor, each individual neighborhood, I think it really goes beyond the scope of admitting our zoning ordinance. I think that there actually should be, beginning now as a subcommittee, to look at each, each neighborhood, piece by piece, and look at those, taking input from the neighbors who live in them, and architects, and then also staff, and do it. Because it's a pretty involved process on each one of them. And maybe we have five, maybe we end up with four or five different distinct design criterias for each, for each neighborhood. But I think that it can't go on within the realm of the zoning ordinance change because it's too big a project. It needs to be dealt with separately and actually move in conjunction with it. So that's my first, my first note on this. And there's another thing at play in the village is FEMA regulations. Because today, the lower story on almost everything along the river and everything all the way up to Cherry Avenue has to be, the floor level has to be built 11 feet off the existing surfaces. So you're really starting a house today that needs to be changed or added into the village to 11-foot height limit. If you are not, if you are not in a historic district, which is part of Riverview Avenue area, that if your house is destroyed by flood, you will be forced to take and, or burns down, or whatever it is, you'll be forced to take, and you would actually be required to do a garage to 11-foot level before you even got into the structure. So when I see a height limit of 20, 27 feet, there's some limitations in that, in that, yes, people can do it now, but you're going to have, I'll guarantee you, and I've designed them, is you have a 7-foot 6 ceiling all the way through your house. You don't have any 8-foot ceilings, but you can possibly get in 27. The problem in the village and our zoning is not, is how we calculate what people can build. Instead of, instead of going to floor ratio or to floor square footage, we should really be, what we're usually concerned about is massing. In other words, there is ways, and some communities have done this, is determine what mass is allowable for a certain size lot. So in other words, if you want a steeper pitch roof, or you want more height in this thing here, you have to give it up on the side. So it's the mass of the house reduces with, with, with the volume. So you're talking a volume instead of a floor, square footage. Okay? And it's not a difficult thing for architects to calculate that. And, and then, in their submittals, they have to prove that the massing of this house, the total volume, is this amount. So what you're controlling, instead of how many square feet you can get in the lot and the height of things, you're controlling what the massing is. Yes, you have to set a maximum square height to a thing. I don't, I don't know what the best height in the village is, but I'll tell you, I'll tell you, the Six Sisters is a pretty nice profile, and that's 30 feet. I'm just going to start there. Okay? So you're 30 feet, you're 30 feet-
It's 40 feet back from the street.
Yeah, okay. I'm just telling you what height this. And so if you're looking from above or you're looking at the village, that's something you can judge what 30 feet is as compared to what you see. There's a lot of three-story places in the village now. It's not unique at all. I mean, there's, one quarter of the structures may be three-story in some way. So it's, it's not something, the three-story doesn't matter. What matters is to say what the tall is like. But I'll tell you, if you keep it at where it is now, with FEMA floodplains, someday you're going to have a village that everything downstairs is a garage, and you're going to have two stories above it, and you're going to have flat roofs all the way across the village. So what you're doing, you're taking the design cri, the criteria, the design criteria, and you're stuffing it into a mold, and that's what this pattern will do. It won't, it won't happen today. It may happen 20 years, but 40 years from now, you're going to walk down the streets of San Jose Avenue, and you're going to see garage doors, frontages all along that, along that stretch. That's what you're going to see, because eventually, people are going to have to replace those older homes. And that gets back to another issue I have here. We need a historic ordinance in this town. If we really care about keeping the character and the size of our community and having controls on it, we need an ordinance that the staff can enforce. When a client comes in or a person comes to buy a house in Capitola, they can go up to planning department and say, you know what, I'm interested in buying this house, and what can I do with it? Or right now, they really can't tell them much. You say, well, it's in historic inventory, but I can't tell you what you can do with it, so you take the risk of buying it. And then you have, then you have battles at staff level, difficult for staff, difficult for the community to understand. If you have historic ordinance, they know exactly what to do with it, and, and your neighbor knows exactly what's going to happen with that house. So I think that we should bring back the concept of bringing in a historic ordinance. R1 at 25 feet, there's no jurisdiction that I know of in the state of California that has a height limit on their house at 25 feet. There's none. There's no place. And what it does to you is it, it destines you to lower pitched roofs when you do that, and it takes the design criteria, the, the design elements that's possible with this. It really should be at 27 feet, is what R1 should be. Now, again, I go back to my massing thing. If you, if you give people a little steeper roof, and they want to do a French Tudor, which, we haven't seen one in years, but if we, if we, you do a French Tudor design, it gives you opportunity, if you use the massing concept, you're doing this, you're pulling it from the side. So the trade-off is, is you're trading off square footage at the, so setting a mass is a more, maybe more delicate, but it's, it's an exact figure that somebody, somebody can deal with. In the Pleasure Point, in Pleasure Point Design Criteria, they have, they have exception where they want people to be social. And so what they said is, is if you come out and you build a deck, a covered deck out in your front yard, like an entry deck, will allow you to go into the front setback. So many square foot, there's a, there's a figure like 200 square feet. You can do 200 square feet in the front setback, making it a sitting porch. And what they're trying to do is encourage people to, to sit out in their front yard and be social with the neighbors. My neighborhood's like that. I think that works good in, as a criteria in my, in my, in Riverview Terrace. I think it would work good in the Jewel Box. I mean, it makes, it makes the town more social and it's eyes on the street, which makes it more safe. On the, on the commercial zoning, we've discussed this before, but I really, I'm really concerned about medical offices coming into our commercial zoning. We need to designate somewhere within the city that allows for medical offices and not intertwine it with our commercial areas, because we're seeing more and more applications come in because that's where the money is. Water departments, and I had this concern when the day that, that SoCal Creek Water started taking over doing, in the design business, that they're going to take a stab heavier and heavier hand on this thing. And so somewhere, we have to, to reach some agreement with them, who does the design. If they, what they should be doing is saying, you do drought-tolling only, or give us criteria for it, and let the city administer it where we have part of our design review process, not them. Because what Susan had mentioned has happened to a bunch of us through the process in the last year, where you have something designed, you go down there and they change your whole design for you. Again, I just, I go back to one thing on this. I do think that the process for individual design for each neighborhood is a bigger process, as big a process almost as the change in the zoning ordinance itself, because it requires so much community input along the process. And I, I think that we could come up with good design for, for neighborhoods, but it has to be a community process. And the change in the zoning ordinance, I don't think will be the process that creates good design for, for each individual neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Those are a lot of good comments, and I agree with a lot of them. I, I think my first feeling is that, based on what's said and based on, you know, my experience on the G-PAC before this, was the, the public hearings are going to be a very crucial part of whatever we decide to do. I, I think it's important that we break it down and get a chance to get the input. There were some things that, that I came up with, you know, obviously, you know, my eyes rolled at the two-story mobile homes, so I'm going to go along with that. But, you know, I want to focus on, on pretty much one area, and that's just about height. Because, you know, the one thing that I, that we all try to preserve and protect in this town is what's called the charm and character of the village. And, you know, when you stand back, what I, which I did today for about an hour and a half, sat up on the bluff and looked over the village, when you look from the top down at it, what you're attracted to is the different types of architecture that exists. And, you know, with the existing law, code with 27 feet, what we're going to encourage is a lot of three-story boxes. Okay, there's, there, people aren't going to build roofs anymore. And, and what I- And what I sit back and look at the character and charm of the village is some of the structures that stick up, and that's what gives it its dimension. There's huge three-story buildings that have, you know, great flat roofs, but they don't add that dimension. And, and that's my fear. And, you know, let me break away for a second. To go to the R1 district, you know, like Dennis said, a 25-foot number, I think it doesn't work. With any kind of underfloor space, building the first floor, you're at at least eight, nine, 10 feet before you get started. If we encourage somebody, which people like to do 9-foot ceilings in their house now, we're going to have people building homes with flat-top roofs, which add no character, no design. They can be, disguise them as contemporary homes sometime, but that's not what we're trying to accomplish. And I would definitely support the measure for 28 feet in the R1 district. I think that's a reasonable number. And with regard to the village, what I'm more concerned about is not necessarily what the height number is, because, you know, we, I can do the math, you know, and people can get creative, and if you, if we extend the number to something like 30 feet, they can build four stories in there and put livable space, you know, and make it these, these ceiling heights that we don't consider usable. So I'm more concerned about a livable height, you know, and I want to allow people to have the ability to put a roof on their house, and to put some style into that roof, and to put a little pitch on it and to add some dimension. I have no problem with restricting what our livable space is, and I think we need to be open to that. I think the character and the charm of the village is foremost, and when I look at a lot of the buildings that are there that have the three stories, they're, they do not have roofs. You know, the Superintendent's Building is pretty much built into the third story, so it does give a little dimension. But aside from that, you know, we're taking away the character. We're relying on some of the older buildings, and, you know, I don't want to restrict people from wanting to do what they can with the parcels they own, but I just, I think that a height limit could be okay, as long as it doesn't exceed the living height. And I don't know if we can create an ordinance that does that, doesn't allow any livable space over that dimension. That's just my thoughts. But I think public hearings are going to be the key to this. Working with environmental concerns is going to be the key, and I think we should just take it slow.
Thank you very much. I'm going to open it back up to the public, if anyone would like to make any comments about what they've heard so far. You're welcome to. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Molly Ordin. I was struck tonight by Ed's first comment about Capitola is a special place with a charm unto itself. And I think we're all really, all of us are abundantly aware of that. And each of us, in his own way, wants to preserve that charm and, and the historical feature, especially of the village, and the scale. I'm just going to be sort of jumping around from point to point, but I don't know what meeting Nels attended, but I attended a community forum at the beginning of the general plan update process, and there was a lot of people there, and I didn't hear any huge hue and cry for taller buildings, larger scale, bigger masses in the village. If anything, that was the thing that people were most protective about. And I think you council members know that, and your job is to remember who you represent, not architects, not developers, not the convenience, and I understand it's troublesome for the staff and complicated and complex, but to maintain a special place takes a lot of extra work. It takes a lot of extra thought and care and fighting for what's made that place special in the first place. So without getting into a lot of details about all the, all the things that you're going to be considering, that we're going to be considering as a community going forward, I just really want to remind you of that. And I know I speak for an awful lot of people who feel the same way, that especially talking about height measurements, changing that in the village, there's a lot of really strong feelings about that. I would also say, I look down on the Superintendent's Building daily and the rooftops of Capitola daily. To use that as a standard is, is, it's, it's not appropriate. Come and look at that building. Not that it's not a wonderful building and that we don't all admire, but come and look at that building, the height of that building relative to the rest of the village. And don't, don't take that as, as the standard. Also about three stories versus height, I mean, we've seen developers and architects do all sorts of convoluted things to get three stories. You could have a three-story building, you know, with a 25-foot height limit. That's maintain, let's all come together, figure out an appropriate height limit for the village, and stick to it. We have a lot of flat roof buildings already, Ed. There's a huge amount of them already. So I think smaller spaces, scale, size, history, design guidelines should be what guides us in the village, not, not tying it to a story, but, and consistently enforce a height limit. Let's see, any other things? I had a lot of other things to say, and I'm sure you all know what they are. But I, I appreciate, I really appreciate all of your work and all of the staff's work. I understand how complicated this issue is. I do think we do need to take it slowly. And also, as I mentioned to all of you today, we do have this temporary parking area that's coming online in the, in the summer. You know, I think that may or may not have a big impact on traffic circulation, parking in the village, so let's just see how that goes before we allow or invite construction that is going to bring more cars, more people, more density into the village. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Jacques Pertrin. Just like to follow up on some of the comments. First of all, Mike, I completely agree on the idea of trying to cram more things into neighborhoods. There are certain neighborhoods in this city that do have larger lots, and I think there's a tendency or a push to try to take advantage of that from the standpoint of making that available to more dense occupancy. And I'd like to resist that. I don't think that's what the people wanted when they moved into those neighborhoods. There are certain neighborhoods in this city that are denser, and people moved in there like that. That's what attracted to them when they bought that house. The other thing, I do agree with the last speaker, trying to increase the density of the village, trying to raise the height so that maybe we can accommodate certain projects, but to make that uniform across the village, I do resist that. I remember when I first went to Europe and I woke up on top of a roof, excuse me. I should explain that. I got to, I had no money and I didn't have a hotel reservation, but in Paris, you could convince the nightman to let you sleep on the roof. And so I did that. I remember waking up, looking out over Paris. There were huge buildings here and there. There was more or less a uniform height all across Paris, and it just made it so attractive. But what was really unique was all the different buildings, all the different designs. And like you said, Ed, there weren't any flat roofs. There was a lot of attempt to keep the character of the city. And that's what I'd like to see here in Capitola, keep the character of this city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak?
I'd like to speak.
Oh, certainly.
So first of all, I'd like to commend this project, because I really do see that there was an effort to make it easy, make the process easier, is really what I saw. And I'm really shocked at how listening to the community has changed my opinion from start to finish, just in a short period of time. I was listening to you, and I was like, yes, gung ho, oh my gosh, they're streamlining things, making it faster, making it easier, without recognizing the impact on the community. And I know that in being a good neighbor, it's often easy to say, well, you know, I'd reach out to my neighbor and find out if they were okay with this before doing that, but that doesn't always happen. So we have to have rules and regulations to define what will work in a community. So I think definitely that I heard preserving the character and the charm, those are all very important and critical. I also think that there's, we've talked tonight about some environmental issues, and I just would like to bring my own personal experience to the forefront in terms of considering environmental impact on a remodel and on our requirements. When we applied for our original permit, it was for a very large structure. It was for 4,800 square feet. It was to be built on the existing perimeter foundation with some extensions and then going to a second story. In order to accomplish that, we were going to have to move the entire length of our building, because it was one foot over the side yard setback. So there was going to be not only a huge expense, but a huge environmental impact in order to accomplish the task. We ended up not doing the project, but either way, I thought I'd share, share that. Also, I do want to circle back with Councilmember Norton's comment on the sitting porch. I know that when we went through our design process on our second design, when the inspector came over, he looked at our porch and he said, why didn't you make this bigger? It, it doesn't look good like this. And we said, because we had to meet the side yard setback. And it is a place that we use to communicate with our neighbors. We love sitting in our front yard on our very narrow little porch, and we enjoy it. But the design and the aesthetic, as we're trying to talk about charm and character, was minimized by the requirement to include the porch in the side yard setback. So I think that that was a really positive area that was focused on. Also, I think that I did hear some comment about, you know, the $1.5 million investment and your anxiety and ability to discuss our progress and the project with the council. And I would just like to know if we're looking at possible budget overruns now, because it sounded to me like we were very far along in the process. And now I'm really sensing that the brakes need to be put on. So from that standpoint, I'm, I'm interested in hearing about that. And then I did just want to make some comments about the height and in the village. I've always seen the village as a three-story village. I, I have, I've seen the area near Long Way as the smaller portion of the village, the one-story flats. I look at this photo and, or this painting, and I see this hotel that has five stories, and it's right on the beach. This was how Capitola started, and it is a tall village to me. That's not to say I think it should be San Francisco, but as I look at the projects, and certainly the one that you had referenced with having to have a shorter garage so you could have the space, it didn't look as appealing. It did lose character. And I, I do think that there can be a way to picking up on, I think, Councilmember Padorf's comment of trying to maximize the livable space, or to, to keep that in mind as developing the height requirement. Because certainly, if you're looking at keeping charm and aesthetics in the building, making sure you're not creating a little squashy area for the garage is, is important. So again, I commend you, and it seems like this is going to be a really big project, and we're, we're not close to being done.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate everybody's comments and thoughts about this, and I like, Mike, that you came right out of the gate with, with a great list to start with, and there are things I think we're all concerned about. I don't, you know, I've never heard people say that they supported three stories in the village, except Mr. Swenson, I guess. So that's, you know, that's where this, you know, maybe is part of, part of the mix. I don't support decreasing the allowable lot size in RM areas. We have terribly congested areas now there, and to put even more buildings in there would be a disaster, I think. And definitely don't support a two-story mobile home parks, and definitely support taking over the inspection of mobile home parks. That would be, that would be wonderful. So I think we just need to remember to step back, as some of you have said, step back and look at the big picture, think about what we want Capitola to look like 10, 15, 20 years from now, and that if we put these rules into, in now, that it could drastically change Capitola. And I'm not here, I don't hear that from people that I talk to. So I think some of these, some of these housekeeping cleanup things are wonderful, and thank you, Susan, and a really thorough report. We really need to work on some of these zoning things, that some of, especially ones that are antiquated and don't apply anymore. So I look forward to this process.
You know, just a quick one for you, Susan, and the residents out there. 12 years ago, we had an applicant in here for the church that was on 41st Avenue, and the pastor met with a brand-new planning commissioner, me, and showed me his plan. And I was, at that time, all filled with all zoning regulations, and, you know, I was telling him about this zone, that zone. And he looked at me, he said, "Son," he said, "the only perfect zoning is in heaven." So let's not all get bent out of shape.
Yeah, there are a couple of comments I'd like to make. First of all, to answer your question, right now, as far as the general plan and redoing the zoning ordinance, we are on schedule and on budget, and there probably is a way to look at perhaps doing a little more as far as engaging neighborhoods in, in the design guidelines there, but we'll have to, we'll have to work on that and figure out how we're going to do that. And, you know, the one thing I've learned in sort of being in this process for 30-something years is that it is difficult, because zoning ordinance is come up with, you know, rules where you have a number, you know, a certain height, 25 feet, 27 feet, or whatever it is. And in my opinion, what needs to happen for Capitola, which is unique, like we have unique neighborhoods, we need to come up with design guidelines that give us some flexibility, but doesn't automatically mean that someone can do something, but you want the ability for people to be able to be creative. We don't want the same cookie cutter structure being built everywhere. So, you know, what I'm hearing is Councilmember Story said, maybe there is a place where something could be taller, and so working on not saying, everything can be like this, but under these particular conditions, and if you go all the way to the city council perhaps, or, you know, I don't know exactly how it would work, there would be more requirements that we could build in some flexibility. I think that, you know, it's easy to come up with rules that are sort of the cookie cutter, this, this, and this. The hard thing is to come up with a program, you know, not just regulations that allow your community to be what people want to see there.
And we had an interesting process years ago, when Kathy Malloy was here. We were having a discussion about the look of Capitola and design of Capitola, and what we wanted to see and so forth. And so she went out and she took pictures all over Capitola, and she, she had slides in one of those slide cassettes, those old-fashioned slide cassettes that we, we had, and put them on the wall. And we have a little bit of everything here. We couldn't say that Capitola has a style, or Capitola has two or three or even four styles. She found an example of anything and everything. And when we looked at that, she said, that's Capitola. That's what makes it charming. We have to be careful with our designs, that they're attractive. But she said, to say that we have a couple of designs, you know, was a surprise to all of us, because we, we thought we did have sort of a look. And when we looked at all the different styles of houses and businesses that we had in town, we were pretty surprised. It was a very interesting process.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? We're going to receive this report, receive- We're going to receive this report, receive the comments.
And I've heard two of them.
Thank you very much. We're going to take a five- or 10-minute break now. Okay, we're going to continue with our meeting. Thank you all very much for your patience. And we have item 9D, which is also a public hearing, if anyone wants to speak on that item. And that is Susan Sneddon, City Clerk.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. This item is regarding the council member appointments of the standby city council members. And following all general municipal elections, this matter is brought to the city council so that the newly elected council member or members can appoint their standby city council members and to provide an opportunity for the ongoing council members to review their appointments and to make changes. So at this time, Councilmember Botorff can nominate one to three people to serve as standby council members pursuant to the municipal code. And that the other council members review their appointments as attached to the staff report and make any changes at this time. Thank you.
Did they say one to three people because there may be a catastrophic event? Is that why they?
Yes.
And is it certain order you put those people in? Which one?
I was kind of wondering that myself. But I think Councilmember Botorff has one nominee and not three.
I'd like to nominate TJ Welch to cover me.
Okay.
And I'm just fine with my emergency council member.
Any other changes? Okay, then that is done. Is that, is it a public hearing? Would anyone like to speak on this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. And that's just simply a nomination, so we don't need a motion for that. Okay, then the, next.
Madam Mayor, sorry to interrupt you. But there was one item which we didn't deal with when you dealt with your committee appointments. And that was the general plan advisory committee. It wasn't on your list. And so the request that I would make to the council is that I believe that we have one vacancy on that committee for a village member, because you have a new council member who was serving in that capacity. And I would like to recommend that Ed Newman, who is the chair of our committee, continue on with the GPAC as the village representative. Mr. Newman has property down in the village. And we only have a couple of more scheduled GPAC meetings. So I think it's important for that group to continue with the people who've been involved in it, rather than us going back and trying to educate them. And I think everyone on the GPAC would tell you that they believe that Mr. Newman's done an exceptional job as the chairperson. So since you didn't have that on your committee appointments, and also if you could allow the other members who were appointed on the GPAC to sort of finish out their term, I think that would make some sense. Mr. Butron, who was your city treasurer, is, would be leaving because he's no longer the city treasurer, and he was the finance committee appointment. And as I'm saying, since there's only going to be one or two more of those meetings, it would make some sense to continue to keep that group as cohesive as possible.
Madam Mayor, since I'm the one who lost my appointment in the village person, I would like to appoint Ed Newman and also make a motion to keep all the other members on the GPAC.
Do we need, is there a second?
Second.
Do we need to have a special motion to add this to the agenda? It's an item that came before us after the agenda was published.
Do you have agenda committee appointment?
Or you can just direct us to, we'll take your direction, because we have a meeting next week, and we'll bring it back formally at the next meeting for you to act on, so that we make certain we're doing it correctly.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bye. Okay, item 10, council staff communications.
Madam Mayor, I just did want to make sure everyone was aware that in the budget calendar, which we just adopted, we scheduled a special meeting for February 21st for the mid-year review. I know we talked about it at the end of the meeting last night. Just want to make sure everyone gets that on their calendar, it doesn't sneak up on anyone.
Thank you. Any other council staff communications, city council treasurer comments, committee reports, number 11? Then additional materials? And we will adjourn as the regular city council, and we are going to adjourn as the successor agency to the former Capitola redevelopment agency. And we'll note that all members, our board members are here. Are there any oral communications for us tonight from members? Or are there any additions and deletions to the agenda? Any public comments to us tonight as the board of the successor agency? Any staff comments?